All right, so we will move to the start of our council meeting. Call to order, Town Council Meeting Number 17-24, beginning just a little past 6:20 here at Town Council Chambers. Our first order of business is to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Wonderful to see so many folks here. We'll start off with roll call to put on record who's in the room with us from the council. Counselor Pillsbury.
Present.
Counselor Fornia.
Here.
Counselor Lawrence.
Here.
Counselor Brnoy.
Here.
Counselor Smith.
Present.
Counselor Pilch.
Here.
And the Chair, John Egan, is here. Our first action is to waive the reading of the 16-page minutes from our last meeting from August 6th, Meeting Number 15-24, and accept the minutes as printed.
One small correction. There was a bit about Exit 22 being fully complete by the end of the year. That should say that Exit 20 should be fully open to traffic by the end of the year.
Great. Right, we had Secretary Buttigieg here to, so we can hold him accountable for that timeframe. Right.
So we need a motion that has amended? I'll make that motion.
Second.
All right, I think by rule, we have to vote on the amendment first. All those in favor of amending the motion, amending the minutes, rather?
Aye.
opposed? All right, so we've now got amended minutes. We'll take a motion to approve the amended minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the amended minutes.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Our next order is announcements. I've got a couple to read here, and then we'll go through a short list, and we can go down the line if anybody else has any others. The recycling center has one full-time position open. Please contact Courtney Sparks in HR for more information if you'd like to work at the recycling center. There are still a few days left to take out nomination papers for all the elected positions in our community. Open seats include Counselor-at-Large, Counselor District 4, RSU 5, Board of Directors, the Sewer District, and the Water District. And the Police Advisory Board is continuing to look for interested folks to complete out its committee so that it can get back to meeting. I'd also like to just mention that Freeport Climate Action Now has been nominated for a particular sustainability award from the Natural Resource Council of Maine, and there's opportunity to vote as members of our community who support FCAN. You have an opportunity to vote, and it is an aggregate count of votes from the community where the nominee is from. So you can go to the FCAN website or to the Natural Resource Council of Maine website if you wanted to vote for FCAN for sustainability award this year. And also, I'd like to thank Meeting House Arts and a bunch of local vendors who made a very interesting projection event happen over the weekend. There was one at the beginning of August, and then there was another one this past weekend of the Our Town photos from the Our Town Freeport self-portrait from earlier this May. A curated set of, a mix of contemporary photographs and historic photographs were projected on buildings downtown both Saturday and Sunday evening. And it was really nice to, of course, it was nice weather, and it was really nice to wander around and take a look at all those photographs up on the sides of buildings, which is something new for Freeport. So thanks to Meeting House Arts for pulling that off. Other announcements from other councilors?
What do you got? Freeport players are in production for, they're rehearsing right now for 12 incompetent jurors. It's a very funny show. It's moving around, there's going to be a couple of shows in Townall, Falmouth, I think a couple here. It starts on the 12th, what is it, the 13th and 15th, the 20th and 22nd, and then the following weekend. So look out, I'll have more information next time, but look out for that. It's a very funny show.
All right, we will go to information exchange. We have a couple of things. It's been relatively a quiet month of August with a lot of vacations, but we did suffer through a really difficult meeting out on Bustons Island. As a council, we get invited once a year out there to meet with the Board of Overseers. Bustons is a village corporation of Freeport, and they do a lovely job hosting us out there for dinner, and we get to hear about all things going on on Bustons, a seasonal community. Other announcements, I'm sorry, other information exchange about committees? Matt?
Two things. Do you, do you want to talk about 22 Main?
We can talk about the committee. That's an agenda item coming up later this evening, but we can talk about the work.
No, I think it's, it's under information exchange.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Thought it was a...
So I'm happy to, I see Andrew back there. I don't know if you want to say anything, since you chaired the committee, but I'm happy to give an overview, unless you want to kick things off.
Thank you. We, it was a ad hoc committee formed, as everybody knows, the study 22 Main Street. We met, I think, five times as a big group, and I think the last meeting, we reviewed the report. I wrote a report, it was short and sweet, didn't seem to meet everybody's criteria of information, I guess, so. Report was rewritten once, and then edited again. Four of us decided that town really shouldn't buy it because we couldn't come up with a reason to buy it or what we'd do with it if we did. And three people wanted to buy it, so we had a, the last meeting we held, four people showed up, we worked on the report. Notice was sent out, so only four of us showed up, so we edited the report and tried to keep it as concise and filling as we could, and this was pretty much the decisions, as far as I saw, so. I suppose everybody got the report, I think. So, I mean, we edited some things that basically in the report was stuff like the town should put it out to vote to the people, and we didn't think that was our decision. The four of us didn't think it was our decision. That's your decision to do that. So we didn't know why we need to recommend or not recommend that. And we edited some other things that we didn't think was in our purview, so. With that, we voted and passed in the report, so.
So I can give, just as a recap for people who aren't familiar with the issue, the, a committee was set up to report on future use of 22 Main Street, which is a lot adjacent to Town Hall currently owned by a private resident. And the committee was charged with looking to see whether or not the town should purchase it, and if so, what recommended uses might be. So the committee was Andrew Arseneau, who chaired it, Ben Gray, Kathleen Mead, Susan Nurse, Andy Wilber, Chip Lawrence, myself, and supported by Sophie Wilson. So we, we had great dialogue back and forth. As Andrew mentioned, you know, there wasn't a lot of consensus, but we did discuss a variety of options from straight-up purchase using town funds to fully supported by grant or private donations, to a combination of the two. We discussed many different options for commercial and residential, and expansion of the town campus, green space. So we really worked through the issue significantly, and I think there was a lot of good dialogue, but as Andrew mentioned, we couldn't come back to the council with a clear recommendation. So we were finally able to finalize the report. You can read the details of it, but where it is, is it's come back to us without a real clear direction. And I know there's probably going to be some comment later during public comment, but that's sort of in summation where we, where we landed. Anything you want to add, Chip or Sophie?
No, it's pretty good. I mean, other than, the majority was that no, just because it was, we didn't want to deal with it.
I guess I will just say, I appreciated everyone who worked on it. It wasn't an easy issue, and it took a lot of time, and people were patient, and it was an excellent project in civic engagement, and it's a really important step, even though we may be, there may not be a clear outcome at this point, so.
No, it was a great group. I mean, everybody brought a different item to the table, and everybody got along, and just we couldn't agree on, you know, what to do with it or buy it, so.
Right. I just want to say thank you, Andy, for chairing the group and for leading through, and...
All the other people that showed up too. I mean, you know, the whole group was great.
Yep. Appreciate that effort.
Yep.
And that's an excellent example that you just pointed out, Matt, about getting our citizens involved. That's really important to everything that we do up here. We can't function without that voice, so.
All right, one more. The group was made up of someone from every district.
Yep.
So there was someone from every district, and then there was one business person, and then the councilors.
Right. So we have an item later on in determining the final wording in the election warrant, and this will be a part of that topic, so that'll come up again.
Thank you.
All right. Any other information exchange? Chip?
I don't know this is where we should do this, but would it be possible to move the last item that we have here, under other businesses, the discussion of firearms noise, either to the front of the meeting, because I think we have a lot of people here that are here for that, or now? And I know it's going to, it's going to be a long topic, but...
Well, I can't even see all the people out in the hallway. So we also have five public hearings. I wouldn't want to presume that everybody's here for that issue, so maybe before we take a motion on that, anybody here for the public hearings that are on the agenda? One or two?
For firearms?
No.
Red light.
So that would be the will of the council to adjust the, adjust the agenda.
So should I do it now, or do you want to do it once we get into...
Well, I think we, I think we, we would, before we start, the action items would be when we take it up, if there's a place to insert it in. So it would be after public comment on non-agenda items and after the Town Manager's report.
Okay.
So if we wanted to take a motion for that, then we could vote on that.
I'll make a motion that we move that to after the Town Manager's report.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion to amend the agenda, to move the other business item in front of the action items. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven to zero. Okay. Aren't you folks lucky? We have to stay here till 10:30 tonight, but... Okay, our next...
Oh, hang on, John.
Oh, sorry, Matt. Go ahead.
I've got another information exchange.
Sure.
So, as many of you are aware, Freeport Sewer District is going through an extensive improvement plan down at their site, and there's been, the project is working its way through the Project Review Board. There's been a lot of good dialogue and discussion, but I've heard from a number of constituents that there's a desire to have a, a more sort of open and regular process to discuss what's happening with the planning, what's happening ultimately with the project, have a chance for some feedback and discussion. So I wanted to bring it here to see if, it's something I'm interested in doing. Hopefully, I'll be able to engage the Sewer District to attend, but it would be community residents, any of the stakeholders within the town. But I wanted to open it up to see if there might be support for anybody else on the council that wants to sit in on those, or town staff. And I think some people might be speaking about that tonight during public comment, so I just wanted to introduce the topic, and I, I think it just brings transparency and a level of dialogue and a feedback mechanism. And I know the project is complex, and there are a lot of questions and thoughts, so I'm in favor of, of sort of opening that up, and I'll do it personally, but I want to see if anybody else is, has an interest. Okay?
Yeah, I'm certainly interested. It's, it's a bit fuzzy because the district is its own municipal entity, so we don't have any, any standing, so to speak, to go and say, this is what you should do or shouldn't do. So it's, they, they are their own governors, so to speak, regarding their, their municipal system. I'm all in favor of open communication, and I think communication has improved in the past couple of years, but it, it is a little delicate for the council as an official body to say, this is what could happen, might happen, should happen in any sort of an official position.
Yeah, I completely agree. I, I, they are their own body. We are a large stakeholder within the Sewer District, and I think that there's an opportunity for us to just be at the table together.
Yeah, completely agree with that.
This isn't a mandate, this is a suggested best practice, and we'll see what happens. But I agree with, with your comments, John, and, you know, it is one of those things that we want to be careful and mindful of that, but at the same time, this screams that we just need some engagement and some conversation, and I think it's to the benefit of everybody.
Sophie?
I think along with the political sensitivities of working with a separate entity, where they have a project in front of the Project Review Board, I think it's also important for council to have some sensitivity to that process, in that your role in the process was to develop the ordinances, and the Project Review Board's role is to apply those ordinances. And the council really doesn't have direct input or control in this process. So I would just caution folks, when you speak specifically of the project in front of the, in front of the Project Review Board, I think other issues have come up during conversations with folks about the Sewer District that I have referred them back to the Sewer District, and Matt has caught almost all of them, so I appreciate all of his efforts.
Okay, good suggestion. Thanks, Sophie. Any other items for information exchange before we go to the Town Manager's report? All right, Sophie?
Given the size of the agenda, I'm going to try to keep this brief, but first, I do want to introduce our new town planner, who officially started on Thursday, but it was a lot of paperwork. I think today was his first day. So we have Kyle Drexler. Kyle, you want to just step up and introduce yourself? They all came to see you.
Yeah, sure. I hope not. Hi, everyone. Kyle Drexler, currently living in South Portland, was previously the planner there, and before that in Orano. Originally came from the New Jersey/Philadelphia area up to Maine, been here for about six years and really enjoyed here. Yeah, I'm just, I'm excited to be here in Freeport. I really have enjoyed visiting here in the past, so I'm excited to get a little more connected to the community and work with everyone, so, thanks. Yeah.
Welcome, Kyle.
Late this week, you should see the senior property tax rebate program rollout. Talking with Min and our folks at the window collecting taxes, really wanted this to roll out with the tax bill this year, so that people could get their tax bill, see the program, and be able to figure out what it would mean to them. One of the things that Min and I looked at is the hit that seniors who initially enrolled in the state property tax stabilization are going to take this year, because their taxes were frozen for FY '23, or '24, and so they're going to get hit with essentially two jumps in taxes. And I, so I'm hoping that once we share the information and get it out, that councilors will also share it in your circles, so that we can get as many folks signed up as, as we can. So a lot of effort in the past couple of weeks has been spent around bringing general assistance in-house. So we took over officially today, and I, absolutely, we could not do it if it weren't for the incredible staff in the Clerk's office. They have stepped up to the plate in a major way, and we got our first two applications before noon. So we have everything set right now. Since I'm the only one that has done general assistance before, I'm kind of providing assistance in the background. The state passed a law last year that changed the rule where you could set hours, reasonable hours, when you would accept applications, so maybe four hours a week, unless it was an emergency, which you'd have to take it anytime. They changed that to, we have to accept an application any time that the town office is open. So that is kind of, it takes, makes it a little bit more difficult to plan around. However, we have been doing planning, and we're getting ready to roll out an extension of our crisis intervention and proactive community response, with a general assistance being wrapped up into a community paramedic position. We're going to be advertising that in the coming week or two. We can get them doing general assistance, even though it will take us a while to get it through for approval from the state. We'll have more information about the formal program rollout to you on the 17th, but we're taking those general assistance hours. We'll be able to take that position and put people on the road with the information to make referrals, working with individuals through referrals from our medical director or PCPs, primary care providers. And it allows us to look more holistically at folks. When we did our review, the group that kept coming up as the one that we were most concerned about not getting services that they needed, were elderly folks trying to live independently here. And we have to give a big shout-out to the Topsy Fire Department. Their leadership came and sat with us, with our fire department and police leadership, to talk about how they work a very similar program, and so I'm excited about kind of rolling that out and, and seeing where that will be. Yeah.
I'm also very excited about that. That was one of the challenges that Freeport has had for many years, so kudos to the staff thinking outside the box, kudos to reaching out to get other input in, and I think the residents that really need assistance is going to get it, so thank you for doing that.
And so we go from great news to just letting you know tax commitment is on schedule. This is going to be one of the years that the numbers aren't going to make sense to the tax bill, in that we have had our annual review by the state, which every year, they tell us the value is dropping a little bit lower. Min has seen it coming over time and has been doing market adjustments. Most of the time, if you just see a market adjustment to go up...
Value's going down?
The ratio, sales ratio. We were at 79, which would have put us in jeopardy of full reimbursements. So we've been doing the market increase up. If everything stayed the same, everybody's tax bill would have stayed about the same. The mill rate would have gone down, so that it evened out. As you know, when we approved the capital, the capital and municipal budgets, and with the school increase, the number of tax dollars we need is going up. So you're going to see the mill rate drop quite nicely. Unfortunately, it's going to be offset for residential homeowners, it's going to go up. The, their tax bill is going to go up. So I'm still trying to work with Pete Yazakavich to get a good message that can condense that, so that people can, can see that as their values go up, their tax, you know, their tax bills are not going to go down. So we're working on the visual picture of that.
If you could share that with the councilors and get that language, because we're likely to get calls and emails about it.
We absolutely will. So the goal here is to commit by the 16th, before the 16th of September, and then there's usually a two-week lag. So we'll roll all of that out at commitment, so we have actual numbers we're working with.
May I ask a question? If our property value is going down, why are our taxes going up?
Property value's not going down. The sales ratio, meaning what the town has your property assessed at versus what people, what the market says it should be.
Okay.
And we have to stay between 90% and 110%. So...
Going back a topic or two, question about the senior tax relief?
Yes.
And the state program as well?
Yes.
In addition to the website, is that going out in the mailing with the tax bill? So here's your bill, and here are two programs that might help you...
The plan is to put it in the mailing, but also, everybody who signed up for the senior tax, so about 695 people...
For the old state program.
For the old state program will get the information on this one and an application.
Great, thanks.
And what I hope is that people that get that information are not hesitant to sign up for it. They signed up once, the state took it away from us. So, you know, I think it's the intent of this council to give them relief and not have it go away in a couple of years like it just did, so I hope people need to hear that message.
I think it's important for people to also realize that the council did put an income, maximum income level, which the state did not have. So it's really targeted to people, I think we ended at like 200% poverty or somewhere in that neighborhood. That's what I've got, because you've got lots on your agenda if that works.
Right.
Is it to people who also did not sign up before, because they missed, and so what age group is it?
This is people 65 years and older.
There's also state, there's two programs, right? A town one and a state one. Are they both age-restricted?
There are three, and they're all age-restricted.
All set?
Yep.
All right, so our next item on the agenda would be public comment on non-agenda items. Keep in mind that we're moving our other business item to the very next thing that we're going to talk about, but if anyone is here this evening to make comment to the council about an item that is not on our agenda, this would be the time to come forward. You can make a comment. It's really not going to be a dialogue, but we're always open to hear what people have on their minds, so I'd like to ask you to keep your time to about three minutes, and please address the council with what's on your mind. And please step forward. If there's a number of us here that want to participate, just get in line, and we can hear from everybody. Please introduce yourself at the podium. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Peter Enzwinie. I live in South Freeport, on South Freeport Road. This is like a sprint on a marathon, with speaking to you three minutes every two weeks, but I'll try. So last time, our last meeting was, we identified that District 1 paid 18% of the valuations in town, District 2 paid 34% of the valuation, District 3 paid 31%, and District 4 paid 16%. We all want to pay our fair share. However, we don't know what the fair share is, because based on those numbers, we don't have a fair share. We have a screwed-up mess, either because of valuations, and I think that's really where the issue is. So the state is giving us, or the, the town gave us a report that said, this is your tax, without having any footprint information, any characteristics information. So I don't know how, how much, how many square feet you have as part of that deal. I don't know what the external building footprint is of that... I don't know what the external building footprint is of that deal. I don't know what number of rooms there are. The high-quality assessment component that you just spoke about, um, talks about, you know, that we have a sales ratio. And where is that sales ratio? Based on who? Based on what? Um, you know, we're, what we're wanting, we all want to pay our fair share. No question. But we don't know it. So I would urge the town to start publishing that information so us can go in and look at the reports and say, oh, so why do they have thirty thousand square feet? And I have twenty thousand square feet, but I'm paying a higher tax? That's what we'd like to know. So that's really what I'm asking you to, because we understand you've got to raise revenue. We understand that the shift between valuation and rates kind of go back and forth. I mean, I've been tracking this thing for twenty-five years and I'm still getting, you know, taxes on the same thing, no matter what you do, if you go up or you go down. So I'm asking you that fairness is important. So publish the data so we can see it on our own. Thank you.
Peter, I know this isn't supposed to be a dialogue, but I think it would be helpful because, um, you're bringing up a lot of different things that intersect. I think it would be really helpful if we could sit down with the town assessor and we could just show you, because if there's something that we can do with the data we have, I think we're all for transparency. I just don't know. I think we need to better understand what you're looking for.
And, and I've looked at this year's data or last year's data. So I'd be happy to do that conversation.
Any other member wish to address the council on non-agenda items?
So the thing we moved up would be an agenda item.
Right.
Hi, I'm Joe Meliacho. I'm here to speak at the public hearing for non-agenda items. And what Manager Wilson spoke about was actually something I was coming to speak about anyway. And it dovetails a little bit with what former councillor Enzweanyi was saying. And I'll give you a very practical example of some extreme inequities in the way we're managing our assessment process. I did go in to, and I'm a former councillor, so all of the rigmarole of eighty percent, ninety percent assessed value made sense to me. So she's starting the clock. I don't know, that was thirty seconds.
It's all right. Give me the full minutes.
So I, I periodically, and it's been a issue for me personally and professionally for about fifteen to twenty years, which is when we don't do full revows on all of the properties in town, you have an assessor who sits there and goes, when that property sells, we'll do some tweaking. They open the account, do some adjusting. However, I've found properties, and I've spoken to a couple of the councillors here about that, and I went in and talked with the assessor, Min, Min. Um, and I, I just sat down and, and he explained to me that, oh, we're really, we're at ninety percent now. We're all excited, which means, oh, on average, the properties in Freeport are taxed at ninety percent of their value. However, inside that valuation, I don't know what the standard deviation is. I don't know what the, the variables are. But I found two properties, I'll use one example, that sold for eight hundred thousand dollars on the water in two thousand eighteen. Million dollars went in to fix that property up. The property tax went down the next two years during the highest time of housing increases in the middle of the pandemic. It went down by eighty thousand. So then, a couple of years later, the taxes go up to one point one million dollars on the valuation. That's the value of the property. I'm like, that's, that's not, doesn't make sense. It's a completely different remade property. How could it only be worth three hundred thousand dollars more? And then the next year, I came in and I spoke with the assessor, who I guess we changed assessors, so slipped off my agenda. But then I came in, uh, about a month ago when another property went on the sale. The one point one million dollar property we've been taxing at the mill rate sells and is listed for two point two million. So if you apply the mill rate to that, I think you left thirty-seven thousand dollars or something like that on the table for one single property in Freeport. And the assessor sits there and looks at the listing and goes, oh, that's, that's higher quality, opens the thing, clicks a button and drops down and says, well, the trim's higher quality. So the value goes up by like two thousand bucks. I'm like, dude, is this how we do this? So I would love to join a conversation and I'd hope before next budget cycle, you guys could set up a committee or have some discussion on how to, in today's world, it used to be cost like sixty, seventy thousand dollars twenty years ago. I don't know what it is now. Maybe it's a hundred thousand. Uh, please consider doing full property by property assessment. It's not equitable to some of us who are valued at a hundred percent. Thank you.
If I, if I may, as he leaves.
He's just coming over here.
So, um, I think it would be valuable, if you're interested, if we could just set up a time for you to meet. Um, I don't want to take council time to get into the intricacies of mass appraisal as opposed to individual appraisal. Um, but I can tell you, I just came from a community that, um, three years ago, signed a revow smaller in terms of parcels, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, um, just not saying we shouldn't do it, just a little, little bit off there.
No, that was twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Uh, any other members wish to make a comment during a non-agenda item public comment? All right, we will move on and, uh, we've amended our agenda to take the other business item, uh, which was at the tail end of our agenda and move it up to now before we take action on our action items. We do have five public hearings scheduled for this evening. Um, the other business is specifically listed as such because it is not on the agenda for any action this evening. So I just want to make that crystal clear. The council is not voting or taking any action on anything to do with firearm noise, whether it's, uh, what do we do with it or any potential, uh, responses to it. So, uh, it was a conversation item or a discussion item. That's what other business means, so we're not taking any action. Um, we had a pretty loud, I'm sorry, pretty, um, not loud at all. It was a very pleasant conversation, but it was very robust. The last time we had this item on our agenda. So I know there's a lot of people concerned about it. Um, individually, I just want to share that what we're trying to do is to come up with, as a council representing the entire community, uh, to come up with some sort of a response plan for members of the public who are complaining about firearm noise. So we're, we're trying to figure out what to do about a noise complaint. And we're not trying to solve anybody's firearms issues, uh, whether it's ownership or use or citing in or whatever it might be that the firearm owners is doing. Um, we're trying to come up with, um, a solution to be able to share with residents who are complaining about that noise. Uh, right now, we don't have a good response to that and so we're just trying to get into a dialogue. I'd welcome any suggestions from, uh, firearm owners who are likely to come to the microphone, uh, if they have suggestions on, um, how we might open that dialogue. So, um, the other business item typically starts with a council, um, discussion and then we hear from the public, but we can flip that around so that, uh, we can hear from folks in the room first, but.
I think we, we need to hear the report, which is what the other business item is, right?
Yeah. Okay.
So, um, council asked, um, me and Chief Goodman, who I thought I saw, there he is, um, to dig into data for you. And, um, there was a report that was, thank you. There was a report, um, that was provided to council. It's also was part of the background material for this meeting. So we, um, looked between August eighth, twenty eighteen and August twenty, August seventh, twenty twenty-four. The Freeport Police Department received a total of ninety-three complaints about firearm discharge noise or nuisance. Um, Chief Goodman and I did put a disclaimer on the report because of the way firearms noise is recorded at, um, the, at dispatch. There were, we ran into a few problems, but we think we have them ironed out with advanced search capabilities. Um, we also know that some of these, um, came in as firearms or fireworks. So if they were not, if we couldn't find where they were, they were added to this sheet. So, um, doing this, I, um, we, um, if you look, um, just to give you the numbers by calendar year, which the first in twenty eighteen would be a partial year because it's just August to December, there were five complaints. Twenty nineteen, there were sixteen complaints. Twenty twenty, there were sixteen complaints. Twenty twenty-one, there were eight complaints. Twenty twenty-two, there were fifteen complaints. Twenty twenty-three, there were twenty-one. And, um, calendar year, twenty-four, um, they were, there were twelve. Um, if you look by, uh, fiscal year, which is kind of the way council and staff have been trained to think, what you see is in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, um, the, it has gone up significantly. So in twenty-three, twenty-four, we're seeing more complaints. Uh, we then in the report break it out by month. And you'll see that, um, of the ninety-three calls, forty-five of them occurred during months that were completely hunting season months. There were also a handful of those ninety-three calls that we identified as being in other municipalities so that we did not have any control over, whether it be Brunswick, across the, the bay, um, noise carries, who knew? Um, and, um, also in Yarmouth, there is a shooting range near Yarmouth. So, um, I also looked at time of day. So from seven AM to seven PM, um, we had fifty-two complaints. Seven PM to nine PM, there were twenty-two complaints. Nine PM to seven AM, there were nineteen complaints. So, um, there was a heat map that was included in the background material. And when you look at it, which caused me to do a little bit more digging over the weekend, um, when you look at that heat map, which I guess I was just expecting you to jump into conversation. I apologize. Um, we were able to map eighty-six of the ninety-three complaints. And Tom, can you pull up the heat map from the website? Is that something you could do? Um, when we look at that heat map, there are, there is significant scattering, um, until it comes down to pretty much three areas that we're getting the complaints in. One is over by Baker Road. One is over by Prouse Road. And one is kind of bounded by Cheyenne Drive and, um, Kelsey Ridge Road. So there's, there's kind of more of a smattering um, in other parts of the community. So that was the first part you asked me to look at. And maybe if we just brought up the heat map, it would, gives people a sense of what we were doing. Um, I then, based on some questions I got from councillors, um, looked into the data some more. Um, so we did, uh, noise complaints by street. And, um, this year, this calendar year, so January one, twenty twenty-four to August seven, twenty twenty-four, um, Freeport PD has received twelve complaints of firearm noise. Six of those were from Cheyenne Drive, two from Prouse Road, and one each from Deerfield Road, Fogs Point Road, Main Street and Rainbow Lane. Of the Cheyenne Drive complaints, two addresses each called in two complaints, while the remaining two complaints were associated with two different addresses. So when we look at the ninety-three, um, if you look at, um, the ninety-three complaints, which of course, um, eighty-six of them are mappable. Um, sixteen were associated with, um, more than, or more calls for one address, so multiple calls. So one address on Kelsey Ridge called four times. Um, another address on Kelsey Ridge called three times, Litchfield Road, three times, an address on Peaper Place, three times, and then the two each on Cheyenne Drive. So that's the data, which you guys have had a chance to look at more thoroughly. Um, when we look at the other piece that you asked me, us, to look at is the, um, ordinances. Um, and as part of that, I looked at eighteen ordinances um, from communities around us in Cumberland County. And then those in Andrusgoggin that were fairly near, maybe one in Sagatahawk. Um, and provided a table, um, most, if you look at, um, the, um, ordinances, you'll find that, um, on the table, I also included, a list of, um, a list of the actual ordinances. So we looked at eighteen, thirteen were regulating firearms discharge in some way and five didn't have any ordinances. What was interesting on the table, um, I included population density, so not just population size, but the, the, the general density. We're at about a hundred and eighty-two people per square mile based on the statistics that we were using. And when you look at, um, the regulation, the only, um, town that's even close to us that's regulating is North Yarmouth at a hundred and ninety. Um, Harpswell has some or some regulation at two hundred and eight people per square mile. So that's why I kind of added that.
You say close to us proximity, or do you mean close to us in density?
Density, close in density. So when you look at the list of the people without ordinances or regulate, choosing to only regulate shooting ranges, um, those folks look a lot more like Freeport in terms of population density, I guess is the one thing I would draw.
We'll have public comment in, in just a little bit.
That's what I have. And I, I am, I apologize again, I guess. That's what I have. And I am, I apologize again. I guess I thought I presented you data. I didn't realize you wanted.
Questions for the manager or conversation about the report?
Awesome.
Thank you for coming. I think it's very thorough. And I go back to, as I stated at the last meeting, I think, you know, we're chasing issues that doesn't need to be chased, and we should let our existing ordinance do its job and not pass anything further.
So, I also want to thank both Chief Goodman and the manager for pulling all this together because I know it was a significant amount of work, but I think this is exactly the data that we were looking for, so that we were not just going off of anecdotes, or who, you know, what we were hearing from this constituent or that constituent. And it is interesting that the number of complaints has gone up in that last look back of the last 12 months of this past August through the previous August. But still not an overwhelming number, but it is an increase. And that was really what I think we were trying to gauge, was were we in fact hearing more complaints recently? And I also think it's helpful in terms of the survey of ordinances to look at, for even those towns that do have ordinances, they, for the most part, exempt target shooting, exempt educational programs, exempt hunting, you know? So, there's, there, that's just, it's helpful information. It's also helpful information to look at, the more rural towns that are in our proximity that have no ordinance at all. The one thing I do want to point out, though, is Counselor Fornier mentioned again that we have a noise ordinance, and that's part of where this conversation started. And I've heard in public comment at our last meeting, a lot of people said, "We have a noise ordinance. It should be left at that." But we've heard very clearly from the town attorney that the noise ordinance does not relate to firearms. So, I just want to make that point clearly, that part of the conversation and why we were going into this is that it's been suggested that we utilize the noise ordinance to try to regulate firearms noise, and that's not something that we are able to do.
Yeah, I just want to clarify on that as well. I've heard conflicting information on that as well, if the noise ordinance can or cannot apply. So, I think if there's possibility to get clarification on that further, I think even between what I've heard from Chief Goodman and our manager, that there's no clear understanding even internally.
So, we have, there is a clear quiet time. If people are shooting well outside of that quiet time, we can go tell them to stop. But when we are not in quiet time and we allow the discharge of firearms, you are, you really can't then say, "We allow you to do this, but you can't do it because it's noisy." The second piece is that our current noise ordinance, the way it is written, is not all that enforceable when it comes to intermittent sounds. And what we are seeing from the courts, which is where that would be enforced, is a lack of desire to spend any time on noise ordinances for issues like this. So, if we wanted to create decibel levels within the noise ordinance and a metering program where you'd go set up, you could do that. The issue with this is it's not like a, like a bar where you can go set up every Friday night and you know it's going to happen. And I mean, I think that's part of the issue. So, my understanding is what the police department does at this point is if they know where the noise is coming from, they'll go let people know that there's been a complaint that has been lodged, and that they don't, that they're not in trouble, but that their neighbors or somebody has a complaint. So, that's kind of where we, where we are at this point.
Just one related to what you just said. And I think it's something that we've all had some level of conversation about up here around this being, we would all prefer to this to be a neighbor-to-neighbor issue and a neighbor-to-neighbor conversation. And I think one of the things that's also come up is around the supposition that some of this is coming from more densely settled areas within larger rural areas. And I think that's one of the really helpful things about the heat map, is because I think it shows that that is, to some extent, what's happening. But what it also points out is that when you're talking about firearms noise, your neighbor could be several miles away. So, or at least on the other side of the railroad tracks at the end of a very different road that's off of a very different road than your road is off of. So, it's a, it's a complicated neighbor-to-neighbor issue where it's not necessarily the person you know down the road. It's that if you are in a neighborhood and you know it's coming from somewhere, but you, you know it's also not coming from any of your immediate neighbors, I think it's really hard to have that conversation. So, in a lot of ways, what we're doing is having this conversation via the police department, where you have somebody coming down and saying, "Your neighbor has a complaint," but I can't tell you who that neighbor is. And I also can't tell the neighbor who's complaining, "Who is the person doing the shooting?" So, it's, it's sort of a game of telephone rather than an actual conversation between people. And I think that's part of why this has become so complicated. I do appreciate the fact that we've been able to have a very civil conversation about this, and our, you know, a lot of the conversations I've had with many constituents have been very civil. The folks that came and spoke to us at the last meeting were, which I, which I really appreciate. The one thing that I have concerns about that I've heard from some of the previous public comment is rather than only stating your personal position or speaking from your experience, I've heard some folks attribute motives to someone else that they may not have actually spoken with directly. And I think that's been the part that I've found the most frustrating in terms of this conversation, is we're up here, as Chair Egan said, to try to represent everybody and listen to everybody. So, we're trying to take at face value what people are saying to us about their own experience. But I can't, it's hard to listen to somebody else tell me what somebody else's motivation is. So, I, I do appreciate hearing from folks, and I know we're going to hear from folks in a minute. So, it'd be really helpful to me to speak focused on your own personal experience.
I have a question. Chief, if somebody called and said, "Hey, I'm going to go fire, shoot my weapons out," and if, and they said, "If someone calls and says, 'Hey, I have a problem,' you can give them my name and they can give me a call," would that be acceptable? Is that something, I mean, I know the privacy, when you go, when someone calls you and says, "Hey, I have a, I have a complaint for a firearm," you can't give the person that they're complaining against.
So, it sounds like you're proposing kind of what you're.
We can't hear you, chief. Can you make sure it's on?
Yeah, I, can, is this supposed to pick me up?
You can just go to the podium.
So, it sounds like kind of a program, or a system where people would preemptively call in to report that they're going to do an activity?
Yeah. They don't have to do it, but it'd be something to alleviate what the issue is that you're saying because of the privacy concerns when someone makes a complaint.
Yeah.
And when you go out and, I don't know, because last, last time we talked, we had a couple people say, "Hey, call me," but there wasn't a way for them to do that.
Yeah. I know, from a police department standpoint, when we go to the range, we put stuff out on social media because we make a lot of noise. So, we like people to be in the loop so they're not calling in and using the 911 system to
Right.
Report, report things, because that happens. So, yeah.
I'm just trying to preemptive.
This is kind of a.
And it's, it strictly would be voluntary. You don't have to do it, but it might be the neighbor-to-neighbor thing that we're talking about.
Yeah, it, it's kind of adding another level of ask from our dispatchers and from the officers who are already out doing a lot of calls and activities. So, I, I'd have to give that some thought. It's something I've really never, it's kind of an interesting concept, but.
May I ask you, are you shooting at a legal violent range?
Is this for me?
Like a legal, just a regular fire range, or are you shooting around neighbors?
Oh, no, we're out, out at the range at the city, town facility.
The range?
Yes, yes.
Licensed range?
Licensed by the power invested in the town of Freeport.
Darrell, do you have a question?
I'm just wondering, knowing a lot of the people here this evening, I think they know where the ranges are in the areas we're talking about. And I think they could communicate with those people there if we went out and said, "Guess what? All we need to do is say, 'We really encourage you to take and give a call.' I'll bet $100 right now, the problem's going to get taken care of because these gentlemen and ladies, part of the town don't want to be a nuisance, and they're willing to work with people." So, I think the fact that they're all here and we can come to a solution, I think we can get there without furthering our rights as landowners in the town, so.
May I, please?
Hang on just a second. We haven't opened up the public hearing yet. Just a second. Just want to make sure the counselors are finished, asking questions.
I just want to sort of clarify a couple things upfront, that I don't want to put words in our mouths, but I don't think that there's a will to ban firearms. We can't ban firearms. It's not in our ability to do. It's a different level of government that would do something like that. I don't think there is a will to restrict firearms at this point in town. Even if all of our minds got changed and there was a will, we're definitely not doing anything tonight. We can't do anything tonight. Anything we do would require at least two meetings. So, we're not passing a firearms ordinance tonight. And I don't think that there's a will to take it up within the next year or so. It's instructive to me to look at the research that Sophie and staff have prepared. There are some things that I hadn't considered before tonight that are on my mind now, like South Portland banning the firing of cannon. So, a little extreme, but it kind of makes sense. So, there may be some extreme things that we should look at, but, but for now, I think that's our going in point, is that we're not, we're not doing anything tonight. It's a discussion. We're here to learn. So, I just want to set that.
Darrell?
I'm going to be brutally blunt. Many of the friends here don't trust us. We're politicians, and we can sit up here and say we're not intending to do anything. So, until we take an action that puts this to rest, they're not going to trust us. And maybe I don't blame them. So, we either want to kill it, or, to me, that's what I would like to see now.
I thought that's why we were here, to hear you guys and give you our opinion of how we feel.
Which I think is, is very helpful, but there's not been an official call for a public hearing, so we're not getting the full community here to voice that. So, there's really not enough, this isn't the time to take that. It's here for us to learn and to educate ourselves, but we're not taking any action at this time, so.
Can I give you some feedback?
We would love to hear from the public, so please step up to the microphone and introduce yourself.
Here, I'm with all these gun owners. I'm not telling you where I live. We personally, a lot of the people that are here, are concerned with Rango Farms. These are signatures from both Prouse Road and Allen Range Road. We were hoping to get more, but some people weren't home. This is maps of where they're firing and all of the boundaries from the railroad tracks, our homes. These people have headaches so bad, they don't just, if I want to go out and sight in my .306, or if I'm good enough, it's only going to take me a few shots. But I'm not shooting for six hours a day where I can't sit on my porch and have a family barbecue, or hang out in my yard for a stray bullet. And these, all of these homes line this field where they're shooting. And it's this gentleman right here who is abusing it, because every time he gets a complaint, he's been out there at 6:00 and 6:30 in the morning, firing for three hours. This is what, exactly. This is what that Prouse Road and Cheyenne Drive is talking about. And when you have to take medication, and these, I found these on the property, they're blowing them up. There's like M80s going off over there once in a while. This is by the pigs that are out there. There's two pigs standing there in a puddle of water in no bigger space than this. They're the big hogs. I need to shut up, Dale.
I don't know, no.
Okay.
Identify what those things are.
Oh, they're fire extinguishers, empty fire extinguishers.
You should feel safe over there.
They're empty.
No, the guns going off. You should feel safe over there.
No, because now I think he, he threw me off the road. He told me, when I went down, I asked where Rango Farms shooting range, supposedly it's a shooting range. And I asked him, I said, "There are signs. It's supposed to be like a, I don't know, private," I have a whole thing that I wrote up. But I, so I went down, and I'm like, "It's got to be down here." And it's a dirt road. Thank goodness I have a Subaru. And that's when I saw the pigs and these things, and I couldn't even get down to where they're shooting. And I came back out, and I asked the gentleman, whose name is, wait a second. Yeah, okay. Anyways, he lives at the end of the road where I pointed at, and I was just asking him questions. If I was, wanted to shoot in my guns.
Sorry, ma'am, could you please step up to the mic so we can capture on video, on audio?
If I wanted to bring my guns down to shoot for hunting season, or, or shoot a minute, because I mean, there's a firing range. And he told me, when I asked a couple questions, he asked if I was a resident of that road. And he told me, "I need to leave the road immediately because I had no right to be down there unless you are related to or know somebody down this road. If you don't leave the property now," and I was on his property. I was in my car. And he said, "I will call the officer to have you escorted out." Alls I was doing was asking. This is the gentleman that you want us to call and say, "Can you please stop firing your gun?"
Can we clarify if that was a town road or a private road?
It's a private road, but I know people down there.
That doesn't give you the right to go there on his property.
No, it wa, I was not on his property. He does not own.
I'm sorry, folks, if you're going to have a personal argument and conversation, we could have that out in the hallway. This is a public hearing for members who came here.
That doesn't give you the right.
I was not on his property.
I'm sorry, I'm going to cut off the back and forth. This is a public comment to the council.
Okay, so anyways, his, his name is Adam. Don't know his last name. That lives right at the end of that, that threw me, and I, and I know. the end of that, that threw me, and I know the people that are right up the road.
We have a lot of folks who'd like to comment, so I'm sorry.
Absolutely, so I'll step down, but there is no way, I am not against firearms, we are not trying to stop the hunting or any of that, and it's the abuse of six to eight hours a day that we're listening to. And we can't talk to him, as you were asking him.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Other folks wish to make comments? Again, we're not taking any action tonight, but if folks are here, we'd like to hear from you. And please direct your comments to the council.
I live up on the Webster Road. I've got a neighbor that has probably the longest shooting range that there is. They fire all day, Saturday and Sunday and Friday afternoons. They've got a new complex that's across the street from them on Desert Road with a couple of hundred new homes in a development. Don't hear any of this quabbling back and forth from them. This is the big brother in town. I've got a shooting range at my home that I've had for over 25 years that the former police chief came down and certified for me. I've never had any of the neighbors complain. If they did, they came over and said, "Steve, hey, you're driving my dog crazy, can you stop for a little bit?" And that's all it took. But if the noise is bothering you, earphones are pretty cheap. You can work that a little bit on yourself, but if you have a piece of property that's large enough to do what you're doing, hard for me to have somebody come and tell me I can't. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening, my name is John Dunham, I live off of Flying Point Road. Thank you very much for clarifying some questions I had on that heat map. Some of what I was going to say tonight was based on some concerns I had about that heat map. I find it very interesting that you had complaints and incidents, which in my mind are two different things. You could have multiple complaints about the same incident, and some of those were fireworks. So, I'm going to change my comments on the fly here because I did spend some time with that data. I am here to voice my strong opposition to adding a ordinance to limit firearms discharge here in Freeport. Basically, I have two points here. The first is that Freeport is a rural community. I was, I pretty much grew up here, was gone for 35 years when I came back. I came back knowing I was moving into a rural community. I bet there's almost no one here that knows me. I go weeks without seeing anybody, but boy, I can hear everybody. I can hear your chainsaw, I can hear your truck, I can hear people going cycling down the road shouting to each other because they can't hear very well with their helmets on. And I can hear the airboats, I can hear lots of noises. My point is, you're in a rural community, you're gonna hear rural noises. My second point is a little bit changed now because of some of the clarification that you all have made. My concern was watching that July 16th meeting, I became concerned, then I became dismayed, and then eventually angry. What I was seeing did not look like honest and clear, transparent government process, and I'll explain why. You started talking about a series of noise complaints, this is before I had a chance to look at the heat map and assess what was there. At some point, somebody talked to the lawyer, and I'm not exactly sure who the lawyer was, but the lawyer said, "No, you cannot address these noise complaints with a noise ordinance." And I believe that the state statute was even cited, I have it written down, I think it was at minute 24 of that day. Immediately, there was a 90-degree turn to, "How can we limit firearms discharge?" And the discussion was something along the lines of, "This council will talk about where we will allow firearms discharge, if at all." It's a little bit paraphrased, y'all can go back and you can take a look at the words from that meeting. But that meeting was pretty startling. The way it came across to your tax-paying residents of Freeport was not good. So, then the whole heat map issue, you had one that was listed as a firearm discharge about less than 100 yards from where you guys are right now. So, there are existing main statutes, laws, that would cover a lot of that. I bet if I had the data, Chief, I'm glad you're here, if I had that data, I bet we could filter through that and find that a tremendous number of those either aren't firearms, or there is an existing main law or statute that already would have covered it. We cannot add more burden to law enforcement to ask them to hustle out for each of these complaints. Sorry, I realize I'm running out. We've got a resource problem here where you cannot assign resources on a subjective problem. Decibels, they change from distance, from firearm, you just can't do it. So, if it's a noise problem, let's talk about noises. Tired of hearing my neighbor singing off cue. It's awful. I love the guy, but it's terrible, right? Let's put all of the noises on the table and talk about it. Or, if what you're really doing is talking about trying to eliminate hunting and shooting here in Freeport, put that on the table and be honest and clear about it. Okay? Thank you, everybody. If anyone has any questions, please feel free to follow up, more than happy to chat.
Thank you.
Thank you, my name's Guy Quitruchium, Freeport resident. Thanks to the town manager for digging a little deeper on the heat map for those clarifications, and to the District 1 Council as well for adding some clarifications, and particularly the comments on civility. I'll try to keep that in mind, because my first drafts weren't particularly civil. So now, we're at risk of fooling around with Second Amendment firearm issues at the municipal government level while previously trying to suggest that it was a noise issue. Two in-state and one national Second Amendment firearms rights groups are aware of the Freeport issue. Some of you previously suggested, "No, it's a noise issue." I'm glad to hear that it's a firearms issue, because it is a gun issue. By your own statements, it was brought to you as a gunshot firearms complaint. It's the kind of municipal meddling that fines municipalities sued at great cost to taxpayers because overactive public officials are operating out of their lanes. I'm a native Maynor, a real Maynor, I understand and accept our culture, including the gun culture. I hunt, I target shoot, I skeet shoot, not blast a woodchuck damaging my garden when I feel like it. The sound of a gunshot's no different, as other people have pointed it out, the sound of a dump truck tailgate slamming, a snowplow blade slamming the pavement, a lawnmower, a snowblower, a small engine backfire, a thunderclap, a commercial truck air brake, a sonic boom, a truck backfire, a fireworks show. A gunshot sound which carries from a hunter in any month really, day or night, hunting within town limits where it's legally allowed. To what illogical lengths can we go? Are you going to investigate and regulate all of them? Exactly who and how determines the origin or nature of the sound and then differentiates how one is really any different from another? Who's going to chase this stuff? Who and how? It's not a noise issue, it's a gun issue. It's interesting that on the data sheet you provide, there's no indication that any of the reported potential gunshot complaints resulted in a violation notice or summons. I will speculate, not assume, that there were none unless there's a documentation otherwise. The data also indicates an average of 15 complaints per year on an average of one complaint per month over a six-year period, if we're parsing data. Even less frequently if we take into consideration the heat map data provided by the town manager. Perhaps the sky is falling, I don't know. Let town staff deal with this type of stuff rather than bringing it to the council agenda. Refer those complaints to the proper town entity. It's a purview of code enforcement and public safety. They're fully capable of doing the job they're hired to do. Back them up. We're in Maine and we shoot, don't nanny status. Be uninvolved in wasting time in this truly frivolous matter. Thank you for listening.
You're all fighting through the podium. Hi, my name is Adrianne Beauchamp, I live on Cheyenne Drive, one of your favorites. I disagree, this is not a firearm issue, it's a noise issue. I have health issues, and I'll tell you, I jump every time the shooting starts. It's loud. I have recordings, if you want to hear one or two. It's loud and it's disruptive. We're not asking for banning target shooting. We're asking to be aware of the residents that are in the vicinity. And if they are having an issue, and I go into migraines, I call that an issue. It drives me nuts. For 15 years I lived in my house, I never heard a shot. Never even thought about it. Never heard it. Last year, it started. And we can't get rid of it. It's very loud, it sounds like they're out on my deck. And it's only 100 yards, I believe, distance from a building or a domicile. With the way firearms, with the way bullets go, or whatever you want to call them, that sound reverberates, and that's a problem. Nobody wants to shut down firearms, that I'm aware of. It's the noise of the target shooting. Yesterday, we had two and a half hours of target shooting that we had to sit through. And Cheryl's right. It's loud, so you can't even have family over. I have grandkids that come visit, they freak out. When do the residents surrounding these people that are shooting firearms, when do you come in and think about them? If it's not loud, I don't care. The other gentleman is right. You hear backfiring, you hear power equipment going off, those are regular noises. I don't think they faze anyone. We've had a lot of them. Don't care. It's when the shots are fired. It's disruptive. If we can do something about it, fine. And you bring up the noise ordinance. You have phonographs in there, from whatever century that's from. You don't have firearms. You have a lot of things listed in there that noise is regulated. You don't even have a decibel level. If it's a high enough decibel level, it's bothering people, if it's constant. You don't have anyone mowing their lawn every damn day. And I don't care, the mowers aren't that loud. I jump when the firearms start going off. I'm startled. It sounds the same way outside in my yard as it does on my deck, and it's only a little less in my house. That bothers me. I have a tendency towards migraines, I get tension headaches, and they automatically show up. It's like somebody waved a red flag at my brain. And as I said, I've been in my house for 15 years, never heard anything. This just started. And I'm out. Yes, I noticed the look.
Just trying to be fair for everybody.
No one's against firearms, that I'm aware of. It's the noise of the target shooting.
So, just, I'm a little confused, right? So, the firearm issue that we've talked about, and she says it's not a firearm issue, but there are certain sounds that trigger a reaction. This Saturday, I was at the transfer station, and the police were firing, were practicing and getting their hours in, and there were people that were jumping every time that they heard a shot, right? But the normal, not normal, the general population was okay, right? So there are people that are susceptible to that noise. We don't doubt that for a minute. The issue becomes, how do you deal with it? Do you deal it with an individual? Now, it sounds like there might be a range developing. So, if there's a range developing in that area, then there's another conversation that you can have, right? About, you know, who had first rights to the land and so on, so forth. So that is a legal issue that you can deal with. But when you talk about, you know, firearm sounds, I mean, there's a lot of sounds that you can object to. So, my favorite one is Krakatoa. If I had lived in 1880, I would have heard that 100 miles away, right? But, I mean, that's silly, right? But you have to think about that the sound travels, and even the tool, you know, like if you use a hammer drill, it will be at 116 decibels. That's louder than the 70 that's prescribed as normal hearing. So, what you just need to do is say, "Okay, so what's the distance?" You're trying to solve a problem that is worldwide, as government does, instead of solving a specific issue with the neighbors. And maybe it's up to you to go get a lawyer and fight that battle, and not do, you know, and not do a public hearing that involves the universe. At least, Freeport is my universe. So, that's what I, you know, I object. Because which one of these...
Again, I'm going to cut off the back and forth in the public.
So, I mean, you can have a jackhammer at 130. The two bridges have been working jackhammers. So, do you think those people that live around there really want those?
Do you think they're going to...
I'm sorry, ma'am, that we're going to try and just not have the back and forth conversations in the crowd, those can go out in the hallway. The public comment period is to address the council. Sorry to be kind of a nag on that. Anyone else wish to step up? Please come up to the microphone.
It's Dorothy Heinley, I live on Wardtown Road, I'm the one that's not a Freeport original resident, here from Wisconsin. Lived here though for 30 years, married a Freeporter, so that's why I think I have an opportunity to say something. Listening to what the issues are. Can you wear earplugs during the two hours of shooting to lessen the noise to you? Have you talked to a doctor about ear protection? When people are shooting guns, they use ear protection.
Yeah. Ma'am, if you could please address your comments to the council and not to the audience.
I'm sorry. So, the complaint is that the noise makes the person jump. Well, and I understand that, when we do the Memorial Day shooting, you know, you can see people with the three-gun volley that they jump because they know it's coming, but... So, if the person knows they're shooting, talk to her doctor, get a referral to an ear doctor. Ask about, "Is there ear protection?" Because it bothers me. So there is a simple solution, I'm sure on the market. People who shoot guns use ear protection, and the reason for that is so they don't jump, and they don't ruin their ears, and they don't get headaches. So, I just think that that's such a simple solution, instead of up here arguing with people that are legally able to use a legal item by the Constitution. That's how ridiculous this is getting. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Stephen Taylor. I live on Dodge Estates. This matter came to my attention recently at a commuting meeting and, uh, this is the first time I've been drawn out to come and address the council. I've lived in town 10 years. I served as a law enforcement officer for two decades. The area that I live in is densely populated. And as we've noted earlier, you can't discharge a firearm within 100 yards of residential dwelling. My neighbors are pretty close. Occasionally, I might actually choose to try and deal with that fox that's been taking all my chickens. I simply notify my neighbors. But such things, uh, when we go beyond the bounds of a property that legally can accommodate a firing range should be dealt with as, as that particular address. The data that you brought forward demonstrated that there are three locations where this has happened. The only thing that I would criticize about that is I don't know how many were ruled out with the date of July 4th. But other than that, it was a very thorough report and I appreciate and respect that. When we look at this, this matter, we've got a complaint between what seem perhaps three people. I've seen two people address the issue and, uh, that are complaining about it. I've seen several people stand and say that they don't feel that the council should be taking action on this matter because they feel that it goes towards action on people's Second Amendment rights, what can be a very heated topic in 2024. I sincerely cannot appreciate how someone can be jumped by multiple shots in the neighborhood. I have a neighbor that does shoot enthusiastically. I haven't figured out who it is, but when they shoot, I know they're shooting. There are noise-canceling headphones available and I'm not suggesting direct action. There may be things that, uh, that you could do, but those are your choices, just like your neighbor has choices. My neighbors have choices. I respectfully hear what you're saying.
Sir, I'm just going to remind you to address your comments to the council and not to the audience.
That's fine. There are a lot of ways to deal with this. I don't feel it rises to the action of a council matter or an ordinance that might restrict the use of firearms in Freeport, the home of LL Bean. There are a lot of shooting and hunting enthusiasts in this town and there are a lot of space to do it. And I've noticed, I was able to search two of the addresses that were brought up. And they're surrounded by rural woods, not an unreasonable place for somebody to shoot a firearm. Thank you.
My name is Jim Hughes. Live in Sparkville. And I'll just take a minute, just one thought. There is a restriction on where you can hunt. You can't hunt within 500 feet of a residence. However, you can shoot a gun within that 500 feet.
300.
No, 300, I'm sorry, 300 feet. It would make sense to me to restrict the firing of firearms not within 300 feet of a residence.
Hi, my name is Lisa Turner. I live on a long straight stretch of Route 125 where the motorcycles go well over 80, probably 100 miles an hour at night and wake me up from a sound sleep. And I don't like that either, but I'm not calling the police about it. I'm not complaining about it. They're out there in the middle of the night by themselves on a long straight stretch of a rural road and you just let it go. And I feel like the firearms thing is the same thing. If we're here talking about something where the most complaints have been two a month and that's the, that's the peak complaint level, I think we can all just say, okay, we're good. We've made all the laws we need to. We're down to two complaints a month, make, trying to make laws about it. We could all just pack it up and go home and be done because there's nothing more to talk about. It seems like a very trivial problem. There are things their neighbors could do with soil berms or other kinds of things to deaden the noise. Maybe you should try and get the people who own the guns and the people who are bothered by the guns to come in and talk to somebody about that. There's noise experts who can work on that. Maybe it would be helpful for the town council to spend a little money finding noise experts to help the people who want to shoot the guns that often to develop something to minimize the noise for neighbors. That would be a positive action you could take and leave everybody else alone because nobody else is having a problem. Thanks.
My name's Daniel Winship and I actually know where Adrienne here lives. Now Adrienne lives very close to the tracks. Now if you take a firearm, go stand by that, that train and you fire it while that train's going by, it almost can't even be heard. So it is a gun issue. That's plain and simple. So, thank you.
My name's Al Hindley and I live in North Freeport. I figured I'd better say something tonight if not, the boss would probably have a talking to me by the time I get home. I think it's obvious, everybody's heard, heard everything that's been said tonight and there's some things that have come up that kind of strike me. There seems to be four people on this council who are dead set that there's something wrong with firearms. This is what this is all about, is the firearm. Incrementally, we're trying to kill it. If we can kill the firearms, we're happy. That isn't how you build a community. That isn't how you build a neighborhood. That isn't what you're supposed to be doing. Stop the regulations. It's not worth it. Somebody told me a long time ago, you know what? Someday, you know, this will pass and it will. Somebody will move, somebody will run out of ammunition, somebody hopes they will run out ammunition. If, uh, if they wanted to, I think maybe these two neighbors ought to sit down and get together. Maybe they ought to have a talk. Bring a load of brownies or something to it. Maybe somebody else bring maybe some fish chowder. They might like that. Sit down and talk about it. Be your neighbors. Thank you.
Those are good suggestions. Any other folks? We put in an hour on this, so I want to, I don't want to cut anybody off, but we do have five public hearings tonight that we have to get through.
Hi, my name is Phil Clifford. My wife and I have 29 acres up on Beach Hill Road. I like to hunt. I like to target shoot a couple of times a year, shoot skeet a few times a year. And I really don't see the problem. Um, you know, and if there's a really serious issue, like they've been saying, the neighbors should get together, try to do something, you know, to minimize. But I am definitely against any regulations at a broad spectrum that's going to just involve everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Mark Thompson. I've lived on Beach Hill Road for 47 years now, back when there was only a dozen houses and now there's dozens and dozens of houses. And I think that's one of the biggest problems now in Freeport is a lot of this cluster development. A lot of people moving in from out of state. They're not used to being in a rural area and they come into a rural area and think it's the city. Well, it's not. I do a lot of shooting on my property. I have, I had 30 acres, I'm down to about 23 now. My neighbors, some of my neighbors really like me. I've killed coyotes, porcupines, woodchucks. I hunt avidly, but I also target practice. I think, in my estimation, three times a week anyways, for hours at a time, I have to put up with leaf blowers right beside me. I know it's, I know it's a job. I know there's, there's contractors out there, got, got to do it. I don't complain about it. So if I'm going to go out there and shoot for an hour, nobody else should complain about it. It's a God-given right. It's in the Constitution and no one should be taking that away from us. You people shouldn't even be thinking about this. So I guess that's all I got to say about that. It is my right and I'm going to continue to do it until I die. And I'm 73 years old now, so it might not be that far around the corner.
Thank you.
Joe Maliacho, Freeport. I agree with what everybody said for the most part and thanks for the research, but I agree, one of the first things people said was the report doesn't distinguish because that's not how we capture between firearms, pops, M80s, someone blowing up something or, or gunshots. So I don't see this as anything, unfortunately. It's what you have to deal with as a counselor. For those of you who are trying to address the concerns of one or two or three people, my first time's on the council and it went on for three years in our district, Matt. Pigs in a garage and complaining and smells, but the pigs were legal, but they're surrounded by people who don't want to smell pigs. So, you know, sometimes you just, as he said, you just got to wait for times to change or move. It's just what happens in communities. I think there was a saying about fences, so making good neighbors.
Okay, so thank you very much for all of the comments. And again, the council's not taking any action. Uh, I think we heard loud and clear the position of a lot of the people in the room. And you'll see, pay attention to the agendas. If this issue comes back up again, we're not taking any action this evening to continue or discontinue the discussion. The council will have to have a conversation about that. And we haven't heard a lot from the members of the council here before, since your public comments, so we'll have to digest those and take into consideration if there's going to be any further action. But I can assure you that there's no action this evening and there's no, nothing planned for any immediate restriction or new ordinance dealing with the use and discharge of firearms. Thanks for the public comments and when we have discussions about our budget or fire trucks or ball fields, we hope we get as much vibrant community input because we really do need a lot of input from everybody in our community on all of these other vital issues as well. So thanks for coming down to Town Hall. If this was your first time, hopefully it was something reasonable and that you can come down again and talk about other things that are important to you in our community. As the council, we need to hear from, from the general public to make our decisions as your representatives. So thanks for that. We're going to continue on. As I said a couple of times, we have five public hearings tonight, so we have a busy agenda in front of us and it's already after eight o'clock. So our next item is to take action on the consent agenda, which is item number 213-24. And the chair recognized that there's quite a bit of items on the consent agenda which are printed. I'm not going to read them all, but is there any recommendation by a councilor to take an item off of the consent agenda for conversation? Right, good point. The appointments committee had a meeting just before this meeting and we have a slate, an amended slate of members to appoint to various committees. And so we'll make, thanks to Councilor Pillsbury, we'll make in addition to add Barry Sacks to a nomination to the Winslow Park Commission. Who was present at our, our appointments committee just before the council meeting. So with that amendment to add Barry Sacks's name.
Do we need to vote on that?
We do need to vote to add Barry's name. Yep, that's right. Thank you, Chip.
I'll make a motion to add Barry Sacks to the consent agenda to Winslow Park Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, so we have an amended consent agenda. Be it ordered, that the September 3rd, 2024 amended consent agenda be adopted with the addition of the name Barry Sacks to the Winslow Park Commission.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we're going to start on our public hearings. We do need to actually leave the doors open while we're in session as a council, so maybe we can just get some friends to move the conversation down the hall a bit. Thank you. Our first public hearing is item number 214-24 to consider action relative to granting a new liquor license for Unidyne Corporation to be located at 15 Casco Street, otherwise known as the corporate office for LL Bean. This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to comment on the issuance of a new liquor license for Unidyne Corporation at 15 Casco Street? Public hearing is open. I don't see anybody moving forward, so we'll close the public hearing. Counselor Pillsbury, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure. Be it ordered that a new liquor license for Unidyne Corporation located at 15 Casco Street, Freeport be approved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We've got this item in our package with the full application. Any questions or comments for the clerk about the applicant or its application? All right, it's been moved and seconded. We've had our public hearing. There were no comments. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. All right, our next public hearing is item number 215-24 to consider action relative to amendments of Chapter 50, the special amusement permits. This is in particularly relation to who needs one and when you have to get them and what their eligible, what the eligibility is for it. This is a public hearing on amendments to Chapter 50 on special amusement permits. Anyone wish to make comments during the public hearing? All right, not seeing any, we'll close the public hearing. Counselor Fornia, could you please read the be it ordained?
I can. Be it ordained, the amendments to Chapter 50, special amusement permits to include staff review and approval of renewal applications deemed the susceptibility by fire rescue police and code enforcement officer and who have met all requirements of ordinances be approved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. This is an effort that was put forward by a number of counselors to streamline the process and the number of routine permits and approvals coming before the council. This order amendment empowers the staff to make those decisions when there's clear evidence of no complaints and full compliance. Chris, am I missing anything?
Well, when I, when we opened, when we set the public hearing at the last meeting, the council asked me to put a time limit on the staff review and we came up with 21 days for staff review to be completed. And then we added that the clerk's office would then turn around the license within three days. So we did add those parameters on there.
Right, and that's part of the amendments to Chapter 50, those have been added in. Great, any questions? Thank you very much, Chris. All right, so those are the amendments to Chapter 50. I don't see any more questions. We'll go ahead and vote on it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, seven to zero. Two down, three to go. Item number 216-24 to consider action relative to amendments to Chapter 61. This is our short-term rental registration ordinance. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to address the council on these amendments to Chapter 61 regarding short-term Uh, there's copies on the table. They're not in the agenda package, but the item number is over.
I thought somebody, when the audience was asking if you just summarized the change being made before the public comment, was that?
I don't have that language off my fingertips.
Guys don't know what you're going to vote on? You know.
So the request, the request from the council was for us to make the process easier, to eliminate some of the council review and do staff review instead. Prior to these amendments, the codes and the clerks issued all new short-term rentals. And then all of the renewals each year had to come to the council and each application was supposed to be reviewed by the council on just a renewal. What we felt it was just as easy for the staff to the council on just a renewal. What we felt it was just as easy for the staff to do the review and approval of renewals if there are no complaints. If we have short-term rentals with complaints, those are still gonna come to the council. Yeah, we do have code review and my staff review for the applications.
Again, this effort is to simplify the permit and renewable, renewal process for short-term rental registrants. The public hearing is open. Anyone wish to comment?
I'm Joe Maliacho, Freeport, property owner, and been here a long time. As a lot of us are getting older, our parents are aging, relatives are aging, extended family is aging. And I fully support the change that you're making here today. It makes complete sense. I mean, you just did it the same thing with Victor La's license or Peddler's license, so town staff can handle that. I just ask that as you go through to approve this, I wasn't in support of the 28 days and the original ordinance and having to register properties. It, I didn't, it was a noise issue, right? It was noises and disturbance, because maybe people who had lived in a place for a while, and their neighbors had, their neighbors' life changed, maybe they moved to Florida, who knows? But they didn't want to get rid of the family residence. So I think a lot of people had been renting out. But to register your property isn't a big deal, but I think it's up for review. If you guys could discuss whether, I don't know, one year, two years, a date certain, that you brought this up for review again to see if it's needed, maybe a review of the data, how many of these registered properties have had complaints, noise complaints? Is the intent of having individual property owners come into town and register if you're going to have someone in your house for more than 28 days? I was really, the worst part, I think, of the entire ordinance that I'd love to have you look at someday is, you know, if you're advertising, I think that's, you know, Airbnb, all that. But the ordinance is written in a way that says, if I have somebody living in my home for more than 28 days, and then it gets tighter, there's some that are 17 days, or, I mean, you have to come in and register, whether it's 28 days, 17. At some point, this ordinance triggers somebody to come in and register. And the way it's written, it says, if you're getting direct compensation, which Airbnb, somebody pays you, you get paid, put an apartment out for rent, you're getting paid. But it also talks about indirect payment, or third-party type compensation. And I don't think it's any business of the town as to whether, if my mother's gonna move in, my aunt, my sister, my brother, into my house, and I'm gonna charge them no rent, but maybe there's some other, I don't know, maybe they're writing me into their will, maybe they're doing something. You gotta make a criminal out of a lot of people who we don't understand where the line is. I'm gonna be walking in going, well, Mom says I don't have to pay her back the $30,000 if she can live in the house for a year.
Family members in long-term occupancy was specifically excluded from any description of this.
I know, but you don't, there's no way to distinguish the enforcement. That's my only point, is, are you gonna come in and, you gotta put the, putting the burden on me and others. That's all I'm saying, is you're creating laws that could create inadvertently law violations by folks like myself, who are just moving a friend in, doing this. And just, all I'm asking is, go, try to talk about maybe setting a date certain, where you'll see, did this ordinance cure the problem? And if it didn't cure the problem, figure something else out. If it cured, if it, there wasn't a problem, or nothing changed, then get rid of the ordinance. So, thank you.
The problem was longer than noise, just to point that out. It was, it was to understand what was happening with the real estate in our community, and whether or not there were commercial activities going on in residential areas that might need some oversight from public safety, might need some code inspection. Those are a number of other things that were covered. And it is specifically for transient population, not family members.
Not family. Okay. Well, I got some aunts and uncles, they're not related, but they grew up, and we call them aunts and uncles, and I don't look at them any differently. That's all I'm saying. And you don't know what my business transactions are with them. That's all. Just see if this thing's even needed in a year or two. But I support the change.
All right, anyone else wish to make comments during the public hearing for short-term rental amendments? Not seeing any. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Any questions or comments from the council? Counsel Lawrence, could you please read the be it ordained?
Yep. Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter 61, short-term rental registration ordinance, to allow for staff review and approval of new short-term registration rentals and renewals without changes, or with code enforcement-approved changes, and to require the police department to report annually any complaints received for the prior registration year be approved.
Second. Removed and seconded. Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of the amendments?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. All right, our next...
Quick post-vote comment. Based on what you said about why this ordinance was created, to understand what's going on in the community, how are properties being used, you might consider going back, because the purpose is all about noise, quiet living, and enjoying your property. So, once you guys are gone, somebody may not know that that was part of the reason.
Thanks, Joe. Our next item is item number 217-24, to consider action relative to the amendments to Chapter 43. This is the public peddler's ordinance. This is a public hearing. Anyone wish to address the council on amendments to Chapter 43 regarding public peddlers? All right, not seeing any hands. We'll close the public hearing. And to get it on the table, Counselor Brinoy, could you please read the be it ordained?
Certainly. Be it ordained that amendments to Chapter 43, public peddler's ordinance, to allow for staff review and approval in certain situations, to change yearly review of locations to the municipal facilities committee, and to allow for the manager to extend the permitting season and date be approved.
Second.
Removed and seconded. Very similar in the vein to try and authorize and empower staff to make these routine approvals, staff level, and not have to come to the council and slow things down. All right, I don't see any other hands. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Seven to zero. All right, we're knocking them over here. Our last public hearing of this evening is item number 218-24, to consider action relative to a new special amusement permit for Brickyard Hollow located at 20 Bow Street. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on the special amusement permit granted to Brickyard Hollow? It's a new permit. I don't see any hands. We'll close the public hearing. Counselor Smith, could you please read the be it ordered?
John, may I interrupt? Can we make an amendment on the be it ordered and have it pending code and fire review and approval?
Good timing. Right before we read it, it's a good time to get that amendment, so we can read it once.
Just 'cause that does not have a thumbs up from department review yet.
Okay. Ready? You heard such?
Be it ordered that a new special amusement permit for Brickyard Hollow located at 20 Bow Street be approved pending approval from public safety and code enforcement.
Second.
Second. Removed and seconded. We've got their permit application. Any questions about the permit application or the applicant?
We don't have to vote, there's no, do we have to vote on that amendment?
We didn't, we read it as...
As it was, okay.
Yeah. That is a normal and customary thing to have sign off from public safety on a new permit issue. So we're just codifying that in our motion. Any other questions about the applicant or its application? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thanks for catching that, Chris. Seven to zero. Next up is item number 219-24, to consider action relative to setting a public hearing, to consider amendments to Chapter 21 of the Freeport zoning ordinance regarding proposed amendments of Section 421, the industrial one, or I-1 zone, regarding required buffer strip around the perimeter of the district. Counselor Pilsbury, could you please read the be it ordered?
Sure.
Be it ordered that a public hearing be set for September 17th, 2024, at the council meeting starting at 6:00 PM in Town Council Chambers, 30 Main Street, Freeport, to discuss amendments to Chapter 21, Freeport zoning ordinance regarding proposed amendments to Section 421, Industrial District 1, I-1, regarding buffer zones.
Second.
Great, been moved and seconded. Brett, you want to give us a quick background on this? We're just setting the public hearing. We're not discussing the item tonight, but just to give us context.
Happy to help. Brett Richardson, Development Director for the town. This zoning amendment is a carefully balanced move to enable AEC Engineering, located essentially across from the LL Bean headquarters, or in the industrial one zone. There's a 15-foot setback on that zone. If it butts another zone, it creates a 100-foot buffer. That's an impediment to this business growing. So there's been a collaborative process with the applicant, Tim Hooper from AEC Engineering with staff. It's been through the planning board. This amendment was unanimously passed by the planning board, after careful consideration about how this amendment could impact any existing residential properties. So this is, this is a great move for the town. There is one minor adjustment I'd like to point out, from the language that you have in front of you compared to what the planning board passed. There was a minor clarification from the code enforcement officer, who essentially cleaned up some of the language and used the word lot versus parcel. And that was for interpretation of the code enforcement officer, but it doesn't materially change what the planning board endorsed. So again, this is, this is really a happy medium that will protect existing residential properties, allow a great business in town to expand and create jobs in a really interesting growth sector. We had a great tour last week with a couple of folks in the community, Tony from the Chamber, Mary Davis from the FEDC, John and Counselor Pilsbury were able to join us as well. So we want to support AEC Engineering, and with this carefully crafted amendment that will protect existing property owners.
Thanks, Brett. I really enjoyed the tour. Thanks, Tim, for taking us through. Fascinating business, operating literally right underneath our noses, 200 yards down the street. Had no idea what was going on in there. So it's great to learn, great to see the workforce right at it. So they, this amendment is a very modest amendment, but is significant, and it allows the applicant to proceed with its growth plan and stay in our downtown community. So we're just setting the public hearing. Any other questions about setting that for two weeks from now, September 17th? All right, it's been moved and, no, we haven't read the be it ordered yet.
Yeah, I read the be it ordered.
Oh, you did read the be it ordered? On this one?
Yeah, I read that one.
Rolled the tape back there. I lose track of what we read. Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of setting the public hearing?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Hopefully it goes just as smooth in two weeks, Tim. Our next item is item number 220-24, to consider action relative to endorsing the November 5th, 2024 municipal election warrant. We have a couple of suggested phrases that will be in there. I don't know, Sophia, are we gonna read the warrant, or put it up available, or how are folks gonna know what the language is that we're proposing?
Tom, can you pull up the link? So there should be language over there. You should have it.
It's on the table over there for the, for the public?
Yep.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure people have an idea of what we're gonna be talking on. I'll introduce the site and be it ordered that the election warrant calling for the November 5th, 2024 annual election be signed. And there are specific amendments to, or additions, edits to the election warrant regarding two items that the manager is gonna briefly introduce.
So the first item is one that has kind of circled around council for a little bit of time, and then hit my desk when residents were started to talk about circulating a petition and how they would go about doing that. And that is a citizen request to purchase 22 Main Street, so a referendum that is worded in the background material.
So our action is in contrast to the citizen referendum?
Our action would be...
The council to put that on.
For the council to be, to do that. And I just want to, in the, the draft question says, "Do you favor authorizing the Freeport Town Council to issue general obligation bonds, notes, or other borrowing instruments in an amount not to exceed $500,000, which may be callable, for the purpose of purchasing real property located at 22 Main Street, tax map 11, Lot 132, also described as the approximate 0.76 acre undeveloped parcel on the corner of West and Main Streets between Freeport Town Hall and the Public Safety Building, subject to unappropriate environmental review, satisfactory appraisal, and future use as solely determined by the Freeport Town Council?" So the reason I brought this, asked if we could have a conversation tonight about this, is residents can go forward and craft some kind of petition language that would meet with the charter. Not exactly sure that it, it couldn't be this exact language, have to be a little bit tweaked. But if they do that, and they get the signatures, because of the timing, it actually sets up having to hold two elections simultaneously, which is why this triggered a concern for staff. Because they will be operating under a different process, and the timing would have that election on a different date. And so Chris would be fielding absentee ballots for one person who thought that they, and that the elections wouldn't be that far off in, in time. So, given the fact that council had spoken about, if we were gonna do this, they'd want, you'd want to put it out to a referendum anyway, I thought this would be an opportunity. I've talked with, with a couple of counselors that have been kind of marshaling this issue, to at least put it out there for discussion. There are a couple people in the room that I, I have had conversation with, and so I don't know if you want to hear from them or not, or how you want to kind of move forward. But this is kind of what we got to in terms of if the council wanted to put it out, this is what it would look like. If a resident petition goes forward, as long as it meets the criteria in the charter, which is not super specific, and is constitutional, it would go on a referendum within a prescribed period of days. From the date we receive the petition, I think Chris has 10 days to certify it, and then you have 10 days to call a public hearing, and then the election has to happen a certain number of days after that.
Which may or may not be on November 5th.
Which would likely not be on.
Right. So I think that's the, that's the point of having the council move this forward, is to consolidate the effort, take advantage of the voting public appearing at the polls on that same day, in order to get the intended feedback that we're looking for, or that the, that the proposed question is seeking. So, before we get to that conversation, though, could you talk about the second item that we're talking about on the, on the ballot?
So the second item I'm bringing to you formally, and I apologize for it to be quick, but when we appointed an acting fire chief, this came to my attention with much different urgency. So we have a 1997 Pierce tandem axle fire truck, ladder truck. It has been on the Capitol plan for several years. It is, it, this year, it, we bumped, I bumped it ahead a year, because the questions that I asked during the process just, they weren't ready. They didn't have the answers for the questions. What we learned when the new chief came in and evaluated all... What we learned when the new chief came in and evaluated all of the equipment is that our ladder truck has got some serious issues. Specifically, I want to, Tom has got me all set up here with somewhere, pictures, Tom? There we go. So the major issue here is the frame and undercarriage.
Can you expand that a little bit?
Let me see what I can do. This is tapping my, there we go. Is that? So what you're, whoops, got a really good look there. Yeah. So what you're looking at is a frame that is actually made of two C pieces of steel that have been compressed together. Over time, wear and tear, water, sand, and salt have gotten in there and is causing the metal to rust and expand. And it is damaging the integrity of the equipment. So this isn't surface rust that we can just fix. We've got holes in compartments, significant rust and deterioration. So when our acting chief went to talk to our, whoops, Tom, we can go back to the, so when our acting chief went to talk to our mechanic, he learned that it likely is not going to get a sticker in February, that he would not put a sticker on vouching for its integrity for a year, that it's just not something that he can do. Along with the frame integrity and something that Jacob hadn't even seen yet is there is a very large hydraulic leak related to the ladder. And it is, it is going to be costly to fix it. It's not going to be a cheap fix. The last time I fixed something like this on the ladder in my previous town was about And what we're seeing is, much like you would see with your own personal vehicle, you can go years without a lot of repair costs. The ladder has actually served us incredibly well, understanding that most of these things we repair in-house or have been able to repair in-house. So we're just buying parts and not having to pay for labor. But as cylinders and frames and that kind of thing, pumps begin to age, those are things that our mechanic can't do. So when we send it out, we're paying for labor, which we're not used to. So in the last two years, we have put about $20,500 into repairs, not counting the ones that are already, that I've listed that we haven't done yet. And what concerns us is we only have about 23, we've only put a total of $23,000 in for repairs. So what we're seeing is a significant increase in the truck, the wear and tear on the truck really hitting us. So when we say we need a new truck, the next question is, okay, this piece of equipment is past its useful life, it's 27 years old, it's lived a good life, it's served us two years longer than NFPA would tell us we should be running a ladder truck. But does Freeport really need a ladder truck? Which is the question, right? Because we don't just need to do things the way we've always done things. And what I learned in asking this question is that our ladder truck is a critical tool for fire suppression and rescue in Freeport. We run 100-foot stick ladder without a basket. It is a primary response to structure fires and other rescues. Given the materials and furnishings that are used in modern construction, we're seeing fires ignite and exponentially grow over time much faster. So a quick response with the right tools is really important. When I first saw this ladder on the Capitol Plan, my question was, looking around us, there are lots of ladder trucks. Why do we need to spend almost $2 million on another ladder truck? And what I learned from that is the ladder trucks in this region really work harmoniously as a team on large structure fires, and everybody kind of brings their own skillset. But for us to make an initial response in those first few minutes and then wait for all the rest of the response to show up 10 or more minutes behind, you can do an awful lot to address a fire. So they convinced me that we really need a ladder truck here, that it's not just we've always done it. So we looked at what the options were. So on the Capitol Plan, we had $1.8 million funded by bond in FY '27 on the Capitol Plan. We went out to the three dealers, so there are essentially three dealers in our region. These are specialty trucks that, for example, if you're going to sell Pierce, you're given a territory, you don't have competing people selling Pierce trucks. So we looked for Rosenbauer, Pierce, and E1, which are the three primary brands out there. And there are two issues that are driving our recommendation. The first one is price. The Rosenbauer and the Pierce are both $1.7 million. The Rosenbauer is almost $1.8 million, the Pierce is $1.72 million. And the other is how long it's going to take to get the truck. So they will put 22 to 36 months in writing, but when we talk to other chiefs and in the industry, we are hearing more like 40 months. And all of those contracts, they used to come with a daily penalty if you didn't meet the delivery term. You can't sign contracts like that anymore. They're not in existence. So the Greenwood E1 came in with 1.5, at 1.5 million with a 12 to 18 month remaining on its build time. So this is a ladder truck that had already been ordered by the company without a buyer. So it's a demo, it was going to be a demo truck. We, they are willing to put our name on it if we so choose, if our residents decide to buy it, and which cuts our build time down to 12 to 18 months and perhaps even sooner, but they won't put that in writing. So there are two major changes between the two trucks. And Darrell, Chief, Councilor Fornier and I have gone back and forth quite a bit on this because I really, I wanted to understand what Freeport needed and what the options really meant for us. So the first is that it's, ladder trucks have historically been tandem axle vehicles. The E1 truck is a single axle. And, yeah, and you can stand up there, I don't need to be doing all the talking, chief. And it is, so the difference between single axle and tandem axle is a big difference. And Eric Knudsen, yep, is here, and he actually operates, has operated this truck in a different community, Cape Elizabeth came up, and he came to that, he was talking with me when Cape Elizabeth brought their ladder truck up. And I don't know, Eric, if you want to just describe what you see with the difference?
Do you want to go over tonight?
Yes. I will say we had a couple of other firefighters in the room that I think got tired.
Is this on?
Hi, my name's Eric Knudsen. I'm a resident of Falmouth. I am an employee of Freeport Fire and Rescue and Paramedic and firefighter up here, as well as Cape Elizabeth, where I work today. Cape Elizabeth owns essentially an identical truck with just a few differences, and it's an extremely capable, extremely handy, easy to get around truck. It's not much bigger than the pumpers that we have. In fact, it's probably no bigger than our Engine 3, which is a big pumper. Tight turning radius, the jack spread I think is 12 feet. The truck we have right now currently is 16 feet, I believe, so it's a much tighter jack spread. You can get it in a smaller space. The chief was telling me their selling point is if you can open the doors, you can set the jacks. It's an aluminum ladder instead of a steel ladder. I know Chief Fornier bought the last truck, it's a steel ladder. Aluminum ladders bounce a little more, but they don't break. They're a whole lot lighter, that's why it's on a single axle. Any questions, me just babbling, any questions about that particular truck, the Cape Elizabeth Cape Elizabeth truck is also what we call a Quint, and I believe that the one that's on the production line now is also a Quint, which means it has a pump and a water tank on it. So it's a pumper as well as a ladder truck. It has a 500-gallon booster tank, which is unheard of for Quints. Usually Quints have 200-gallon water tanks. You can't do much with 200 gallons, but you can do a lot with 500 gallons. It gives the guys and the pumper or the tanker time to establish a water supply. It's a really smart truck. The brass in Cape Elizabeth is tickled with it. Peter Gleason was the chief that bought it. He's really proud of it. The current chief is just as proud of it. Anything more I can say? Any questions? Yes, sir.
Do we have any idea about the neighboring communities and their equipment? Do they have something similar? I mean, you're talking about Cape Elizabeth, which is
Correct.
Not somebody that we might necessarily count on.
I think what the chiefs try to do, our two immediate neighbors, Brunswick and Yarmouth, both have what we call tower ladders. So it's a ladder with a basket on the end of it, a place to work, if you will, a bucket. And I think towns pretty much leapfrog. If your immediate neighbors have a tower, then you don't need a tower. If your immediate neighbors don't, then maybe you do. Falmouth has a tower, is Cumberland, Mike is Cumberland?
Yeah.
They're a tower as well. Don't really see the need to pay the extra money for a tower here. It's a lot more money. Again, as
Opposed ladder would be Thompson.
Straight ladder.
Straight ladder would be Thompson.
Yep. As Sophie said, we do work closely with our neighbors. Mutual aid is a huge thing now. Not every community can have all the resources they will ever need, so we try to be everybody else's backup resources.
Thank you.
Does it have to be aluminum? I mean, they're not aluminum, right?
What's that now?
Would steel be stronger than aluminum?
No, it's all engineering.
Aluminum doesn't help, do they? They have the same exact tip load?
We can't get any of the comments from the audience on audio, which is kind of frustrating if you're watching the recordings later, so.
So what
Mike is just speaking to the integrity of ladder, of aluminum ladders. They've been around a long time, and they've proven to be just as effective in fires as steel ladders.
Thank you.
Darrell? Spent a little time with the manager and the acting chief, and it was fun. Well, it was fun for me. I really enjoyed it, and beating up on the acting chief was kind of fun. I think he enjoyed that, too. Number one, we don't need a tower here in Freeport. Brunswick has one, Yarmouth has one. You can do specific things with towers, and you can do very specific things with ladders. The thing that the ladder will give us is to get into very tight spots to perform whether it's a chimney fire, rescue from a third-story window, is a lot easier to get in with a straight stick as opposed to a tower. Now, the tower has advantages, so I think that's important. Why do we need a ladder truck? I worked very hard to lower our ISO rating. Our ISO rating in town is what people pay, both our residents and businesses. And when we come back, we had a rating of six for the hydrogen area and nine for the rural area, and we were able to lower that to a three of the hydrogen area, which the ladder truck accounts for, hydrogen and also the rural area, and a five for the rural area. So we made significant savings, and that also saved the citizens. I support the purchase of the ladder truck. I'm going to get up back on my high horse here, of, and you all have heard on the council, of, we messed with our capital budget, and that's why we're sitting here, and it troubles me that we have to send it out to a bond, but that's where we're at. And I'm sure the townspeople will support it. We have got to have the courage and the discipline to get back and fund our capital budget and not mess with it. And we messed with it, and we're paying the price now. That's all I'm going to say about that. So I think the truck will be delivered earlier. There's pros and cons on tandem, but I think what's happened over the years as far as braking, back when we bought the truck in the 90s, disc brakes really weren't used that much. We used what's called drum brakes. Drum brakes, those were the cutting edge at the time, but we're finding now through disc brakes, bigger disc brakes, and axle engineering, trucks are stopping quicker. And this will turn far more easier than a tandem ladder will, no question about it. I think there's been a lot of research done. I was in hopes of looking at the ladder and saying, hey, can we just put a body on the outside of it? You know, is the turntable, is the frame in good shape? Is the turntable in good shape? And I've come to find out the rust has got to it. So the other thing that this proved to me that, and I think it is going to be instituted between Public Works and Fire Department, we need to yearly put some sort of rust inhibitor on these pieces of apparatus, hopefully, you know, we can get a little more time. But the truck has served us well, and, you know, I support moving forward.
Darrell, do you have any recollection of what the current ladder truck cost us in 1997?
Yeah, that was $800,000.
Yeah. So that's part of the reason why the reserve account isn't keeping up, because it's double the cost of what it was.
Oh, that's true, but there are also some areas where the council has tapped in and we've messed with replacement costs. But we're going to get there.
Yeah. No, I don't disagree with you. I'm just saying that's one of the major contributors.
Exactly, and it is. And not only that, but also with Public Works and Police Cruises and everything else. But
I want to say thank you. Sophie kind of walked me through this earlier, before this meeting, so I feel like I learned a lot about fire trucks in a very short amount of time. Thank you, excuse me. And one thing that's coming up with sort of the financing side of it is we had talked about surplus that we identified from last year's budget, so I want to bring that up here as well as sort of an opportunity of some money we're sitting on.
So remember I told you it was preliminary, and I saw it from afar?
I don't know.
So the nine was a four.
Oh, not as, not as
So at the end of each fiscal year, we put money in from what we may have saved by, you know, any positive balance when you look at the growth in fund balance. Council would make that decision usually November or December. Looks like you're going to have the audit in front of you in October because we were just that fast this year. Can't take any credit for it, but, so I think you'll see another four to But so I think you'll see another $400,000 to $500,000 being able to be moved into the reserves, which would then bring us up to approximately $8 million of the $35 million that we need over the next 25 years. So one thought that came up was, do we take maybe some of that and pay us? You know, buy it down? One of the things that we are going to need to fill in a blank on is the main bond bank quoted us when we thought it was going to be 1.6 million, but it's 1.5 million. So the interest rate's not going to change, but we'll have to run the numbers at 1.5 to get the right total. But even at 1.6 and not putting any extra and just bonding the whole amount, one of the questions that council always asks, I'll just get it right out there, is if we went to the bond bank and borrowed the money, the debt service? So bonds are a little bit different than a mortgage where your mortgage payment stays the same and you tilt principal and interest because you're actually laddering out bonds that you're paying back. The interest rate on the 20-year note goes between 3.5 and 3.87%. Now that is, as of today, we wouldn't need to actually borrow until the spring issuance was where we would apply to the bond bank for, to be included in their spring issuance. And we are predicting, hopefully, the interest rates will come down a little bit. But that gives, when you start the first year, there's, all you pay is interest of the bond. The second year, you start at the highest and then you work down. So the high is $214,000, which would start the second year that you had the debt. First year, it's about $30,000. And then it just keeps dropping until you get to about $162,000 is your last annual payment. They offered 10, 20, and 30-year. I, as a general rule, if you have a piece of equipment that is not rated with a lifespan of 30 years, you would not
Don't borrow on it.
Bond it for 30 years. So that left a 10 and a 20. I'm recommending the 10, I'm sorry, the 20 because the interest wasn't that much in interest savings and the annual payment was significantly more.
Daryl.
Question. We're hoping the interest rate drops. If we were to secure a bond now, can you reapply that if the interest rates drop in the spring? What I would hate to see happen is the opposite happen. You know, if the interest rates go up and we didn't act now.
So the bond bank has two, two times a year that you can apply. And by applying, you just have to be able to show that you can repay, which Freeport clearly can, and that it is an appropriate use of the money. The So you can apply in the fall and in the spring. We've missed the fall issuance. I think that was in early August, late July, early August. So the reason we need to get permission now is you can't really sign and say you're going to buy a vehicle without a way to pay for it. I mean, I mean, it seems, yeah. So that's why you want the voters' permission. We probably won't apply for it until November and, I mean, until April or May. And if the interest rates go way up, then we can think again. But I'm not expecting, I really am not expecting that, given what people are telling me.
Other questions? Eric?
Given, given that potential difference, saying we have the authorization from the voters to bond up to this amount, after we look at what any surplus might be and how we might offset some of that overall interest cost, we could bond for a lower amount if we needed to. But so this question going on the November ballot would be the high end of what we could borrow, but we could, in the ensuing months, work that down.
That, that's why we use the language of up to.
Daryl. For the timing of this action, do we need to do it tonight in order for it to get on the November ballot? We do.
So we could come back, but I think we have to do it by the 6th, is what the lawyer told me on
The 6th of September.
Friday.
So we have to do it tonight. Because we didn't have a lot of time to review the information. So it's a lot of information to absorb and it's a significant expense to ask it to vote on with
The other, the other option is to, well, yeah, I don't really have another option.
So I have a bunch of questions that I would have asked
Yep.
Before the meeting, but now I have, I'll ask them here. Either way, we're going to miss our inspection. We're not going to get the new fire truck in time. So what do we do?
So we'll have to put the ladder out of service and rely on our mutual aid partners to help.
So we can't drive it without an inspection sticker?
If anything bad happened without that inspection sticker, we'd be negligent and we would lose our insurance and immunities.
We, we have a We have a fire truck that's spare in the yard that doesn't fit in our building?
Yeah, we're trying to sell it. And right now, what we've got is, we've got somebody out trying to sell it on consignment because nobody will even take it to sell it at this point. It needs, its frame, it has frame issues. And it's, unfortunately, Daryl's not going to like this, it's light yellow. So
Okay. It sounds like this truck has multiple uses. It's got hundreds of gallons of water and pumping capacity. Does that mean we can retire one of our pumppers because this one is so versatile?
So I couldn't promise that to you. But I can tell you that a request came into my office to put the $15,000 or $20,000 in to try to fix what's left of the frame on the current pumper and keep that. And I said no because our goal is to downsize to the degree that we can. So I think it's something that we will always evaluate. But when you look at ISO ratings or the insurance, you can't count the pumper or the tank towards the rating. So each piece of apparatus is either a pump, a tank, or a ladder. You can't, just because it can do multiple things, they make you pick one of those.
So we have three active trucks? Is that what we have? A ladder and a
So we have a ladder, an engine, a pumper-tanker, and another engine? And the one that's going
So I want, because a lot of the councils have been around. We reduced our fleet back when that engine, that's the right color sitting down there that no one wants to buy. We had five engines. We reduced the fleet at that point down to three engines and a tanker. The fleet was then reduced again by one piece of apparatus to a combination water tenderer, tanker, and a pumper. So the department has significantly reduced rolling stock to the point where I would strongly urge we don't go any further. I think we're there. And also, if you remember, some of the discussions of the possibility of a substation down in the Flying Point area, then, you know, if we, we could do that with the existing fleet we have now and meet that need. So I think we're where we need to be. You know, I don't know if the chief agrees or may not. But I think we've done our job on reducing that.
How many calls have we had in the last couple of years that required a ladder truck that couldn't be served with a different kind of a truck?
I would have to pull that data for you. I didn't have that tonight. I had more the degradation of the old ladder, the availability of this new ladder to be able to purchase that. So I don't have that data in front of me. I can get it for you.
But the types of calls would be chimney fires, things we need to get on top of a building?
Absolutely. I mean, if you just drive down Main Street and look at the amount of commercial buildings that we have that we need to have roof access. Most all of those structures have all of their HVAC units are on the roof. So that gives us access to get to the roof to handle that. We have a lot of burnt belts and pieces and parts of the components that go bad that we have to go up and kind of isolate. So that piece of equipment obviously allows us that flexibility to be able to do that without throwing ground ladders.
So Bob, you've been here for two months, almost exactly.
Yes, ma'am.
Not even, not even. How many calls have you gone on that have required the ladder?
It has rolled to at least a half a dozen fires or alarms and whatnot, where it's been within the run card to have that piece of apparatus respond.
That's helpful.
What we're looking for is the versatility of this vehicle. And that's the term if you Google quint, usually comes up with versatility. So this truck having a tank, a pump, and a ladder will change our dynamics, kind of how we operate as a fire department. Right now, we have what's called a truck company. That's a toolbox. It's a big 100-foot ladder and a lot of tools, air, extra air cylinders, those kinds of things. So this truck here will actually provide another pump option for us, if you will, if we have one of our pumppers is down for service. Whereas now, if, you know, we have a pumper that's down, we only have one additional pumper and a tank truck. This will fill that stopgap for us, if you will, and allow us to, you know, still be able to function. And it's a 1,500 GPM pump. So it's a fully rated, commercial, custom-style pump. And with the water, it can, it can supply its own water supply. It actually can lay its own line in from a hydrant. So it really truly is a completely independent piece of apparatus.
So with change of the versatility, with this funding, are you able to put the large diameter hose on that so you can use that?
We are, counselor. This truck will hold, the way that this truck is specced right now, it'll hold 800 feet of 4-inch LDH large diameter hose. We use 5-inch large diameter hose. We lose a little less friction loss by using 5-inch, which is a little larger. So obviously, we're going to lose a little bit of our total length. But, you know, if we can get 600 or 700 feet on, in our Hydranton district, we should be able to make most of those lays if we have to. And then the other aspect is we also have a 2,500-gallon tanker sitting in the fire station now as well that will provide us, should provide us ample water supply. So we'll have to change our run cards a little bit, the way we operate now systematically. So, you know, for instance, this piece of apparatus with the tanker now will probably respond pretty much everywhere in town.
Dan, you have another question?
Yeah, I do. Thanks. The, we had talked a couple of months ago about looking at a regional approach to response and equipment and fire. So where are we with that?
So the effort continues. Bob and our deputy chief Luke have been active in that group that is meeting. Right now, we're really focused on staffing and training, which are the things that are really hurting us. I think, you know, Chief Bernard and I have talked about, we currently have three ambulances. If we don't necessarily need three, can we have, put one in backup and be kind of a loner ambulance and also for ourselves? Like, are there things that we can do regionally? When I look at the apparatus and the places that we would use the stick here beyond just roofs, it's, it gets you out over things like little ravines or gullies and stuff like that as well. So it, and they also, I've seen them used as rigging to, for rope rescues and things like that. So I really, I think Mike was saying you kind of try to leapfrog, or was it Eric was saying you try to kind of leapfrog? I will tell you that it's not the quint that I'm drawn to with this. The quint is a good deal because it's almost $300,000 less than everything else. And it does give us some versatility. If the other trucks were coming in near the same price and the same build time, we would be advocating to replace what we have. But I will be the first to admit, I thought down here clustered all together would be a wonderful opportunity for me to start carving a little bit from the capital budget. But I've been converted. And when I look at how the mutual aid works down here, I do think if we were going to drop something, it would either be moving an ambulance out so we're not outfitting a full ambulance or looking at an engine. And Daryl will be back in my office if I decide to do that. But we talked about this one, we can talk about the next one. I don't think it's a ladder in this particular circumstance.
I'd love to continue those conversations. It just seems like if we're buying a truck for $1.6 million, $1.5 million, that rolls out three times a month. It seems highly unlikely that our truck would need to roll at the same time that Brunswick would roll, that Yarmouth would roll. So it might take an extra few minutes, but
Can I make a couple of comments? Mike Kansas, I live, I live up in North Freeport, but I work full-time in Yarmouth. So this truck isn't just for, it's for our town to protect our citizens, but our mutual aid depend on that truck as well. You know, Ponnell doesn't have a ladder truck. They have to wait for someone to come out to get there. So if your house is on fire and you're sitting there waiting for a ladder truck to show up, you know, that's unacceptable for a town this size. You know, you can't replace that type of truck with ground ladders or something like that. It's just like the ambulance. You can't put a pickup truck where an ambulance is. Every specific truck has a different job and that's why we have to kind of push that way. And the truck goes out more than three times a month. I mean, the ladder truck's always on the move, whether it's going to another town, whether it's protecting our citizens. You know, it's just, it's going to be a useful truck. And to question maybe not getting it is worse than, you know, pushing it off further. Because come February, when that doesn't have a sticker on it, you're going to be relying on two other towns to come into your town to protect your citizens.
The one thing I, and I see where, when I asked Chief Bernard how many times he had responded, I meant on his four days that he's here on shift.
Fair point, yeah.
How, and
I understand.
That sounds about right.
And thank you for that. That's helpful, Mike. The last thing I want to ask is about financing. So we have a million dollars in the fire reserve. We'll add to that some amount once we make up our minds about how much we want to put in there. This truck wasn't due for a couple of years in our capital program. FY '27 is what I saw.
Oh, I am, I saw '26.
And I didn't see any other fire trucks in the next five years or so. So the question is, do we need to bond the full amount? If we already have a million and we're adding to it, should we bond a little less? Half? Well, I don't know. You know, I don't want to just make up numbers on the spot, but
You can make up whatever number you'd like.
And that's what we were talking about when we were saying, you know, the language is up to for that reason. So if we decide to
Oh, okay.
Pay down some of it and bond part of it, then that would help with that. I'm also assuming, yeah, that's my point.
Right, we don't actually borrow the money until we sell the bond.
Right. Easier to get a bond pass for a lower amount. So if we ask for 1.5, we don't get it, then we're really in trouble. If we ask for 900,000, then people say, oh, sure, why not? I also want to talk about 22 Main because we kind of linked them together. And I know there's a lot of people here to talk about that. So I'm done with fire truck questions.
I think most people would go for a fire truck. I'll just point out that we're, we're looking at, trying to gauge in our capital improvement plan where these items pop up in our, in our budgeting process. And we're asking the staff to look deep into their crystal ball to be able to plan budgeting for these large budgeting for these large-ticket apparatus. And I, I, I wonder, you know, if there was any possibility in the late '90s, early 2000s that we would have predicted, uh, a replacement for the ladder truck to be costing, uh, you know, 200% of what we paid for it back in 1997. So it's extremely difficult to plan, thankfully, we have Jessica Malloy on our team, um, to, to plan for these, um, large-ticket capital items, making decisions about putting an extra 200,000 in here or 500,000 there to get to the place. And then we find out what we've been budgeting for is, is only 40% of the cost or 60% of the cost. So it's, it's extremely difficult to keep up with. Um, and, um, in my long time in the council, I, everywhere I go to a municipality discussion, I brag about how little Freeport has to bond because we have such a thoughtful and, and well-planned capital improvement budget. Um, and, and we, as Daryl pointed out, we just kind of got caught in that this apparatus is going to fail before we're ready financially for it to fail. And, um, we have to, we have to have the public safety, uh, equipment available to our public safety personnel. Yeah. Um, so, uh, back to the item. Uh, we have two, two things to put on to our election warrant. Um, the, uh, proposition to, um, ask the voters whether or not we should purchase, uh, the property next door at 22 Main Street as it's properly described, uh, and whether or not to go forward with, uh, an up to 1.6 million dollar bond request for said fire truck. Daryl?
I have a question back at 22 Main Street. I know the language says, uh, with an appraisal and with a, uh, study of any hazardous materials done there. Uh, my concern is, wouldn't we have a public hearing on this for the public before we approved it? We haven't even had a public comment on that.
On, on the appraisal or on the...
On, on putting that up to a bond. You mentioned at the last meeting, you thought it would be a great idea, but we have not formally, as the council say, we as a council recommend after public input that we put this out. You know, if it comes through as a citizen initiative, that's totally different.
Yeah, I, I, I see where you're going. I mean, we're a little bit caught by the calendar, um, and that we don't have the, the luxury of being able to, to do that unless we want to push it off for an entire year. Um, it's, I don't think it's a brand-new idea, though, that we would consider asking the residents to weigh in on whether or not the town should consider purchasing that lot. Um, that has been part of the conversation, but...
Is that why we had the committee?
It was.
And I, and I think you specifically said this is so we don't have to necessarily go to a referendum. And maybe they would tell us we could go to a referendum, which they didn't say yes or no, but it was pretty clear, I thought.
Yeah.
I will say, it sounds like the committee didn't think it was their call to recommend either way. So this is...
Right. I just said that. I get that. But the committee was, the majority was, no, we shouldn't do this.
But the committee did also discuss that if any action was going to be taken, they would support a referendum because they didn't feel like councils should just make the decision or them as a group. But didn't we also already have public input in a public forum at least once on this topic? And again, it was inconclusive. We heard, we heard from a lot of people saying yes, and a lot of people saying no, and some people in the middle based on if it was this condition versus that. So it, it feels like this is an opportunity to put the issue to rest one way or the other. And I would be concerned about doing a separate election at a significant cost to the town. And it seems like this is a way for us to move past this issue that we've been dealing with for at least a year. So...
Yeah, I'm, I would agree with that. I'm, I'm trying to balance in terms of, um, you know, my, my job to lead our group here to, to set these things up, to get them onto the agenda. Um, I was a part of the council several years ago that had an opportunity to vote to purchase this property when it was offered for sale and took me about eight seconds to say no. Um, and my position hasn't changed a whole lot, but I'm also representing the whole community and trying to lead our council. And I'm hearing from a lot of people that says we want to have a voice in whether or not that happens. So, um, I'm thinking that that is perhaps the next, you know, the next sort of democratic move. Daryl?
We also have another election coming up on the school budget in June, which is already scheduled. I, and I'm in favor of having going out for an election. I just, I think we're going to be criticized, whether it's right or whether it's wrong. It has been a topic out there. My concern is, uh, there's a gas station across from that property for many, many years. Uh, do we know the property? Uh, you know, with the buildings there, probably had lead paint. I, I don't know. I think we're really rushing this through quickly, and we haven't done our due diligence as a council to...
The, the last line of the, of the proposed is at the discretion of the council. So the vote is indicative, but not, doesn't compel us to purchase the property.
And I would believe that an environmental assessment would help to identify any of those risks, which would then...
Am I reading that wrong, Sophie?
So it's subject, subject to an appropriate environmental review, satisfactory appraisal, and future use as solely determined by the Freeport Town Council.
Oh, I see. Well, so that would be the use, but not necessarily the event of purchasing it. Right, okay. I misread that. Uh, well, we do still get to have a review and review and appraisal. Eric?
Um, I, I, I have a couple of points about this. Um, one is in terms of this council's action around the question of 22 Main Street. Um, it was something that was delivered to us, um, really last November, um, right after the last election. Um, and we, at that point, were having a conversation about whether or not we should put it on the 2024 June school budget election. And the conversation then was we should wait till the general election, when we know most people are going to turn out, not, not on a one-issue school budget election. Um, so I would certainly not be in favor of now pushing it another nine months down to another school budget election. Um, I also, as, as the chair pointed out, this has come up as an option for the town to buy it at least two previous times. And the council, um, much like this committee that we just issued, has never been able to agree on a, a use that would be justifiable to purchase the property. And yet, it still keeps coming up. Um, and whether this council takes action on it or not, I suspect it's going to come up again. Um, and I think the way to have this be decided, rather than, for some folks in the last year who've pointed out the councils previously who did not take action when it was perhaps half of this price, I don't know what, what the price was. I don't want to be one more council that had the option to do something and didn't do it. I'd like to put it out to the voters so that they have a say in whether or not the town expends the money to purchase this property. And then they're going to hand it to us. And once again, we're going to have to figure out what we're going to do with it. Um, but I, I would rather put it out to the voters than, than have it go through one more council where we just say, well, we don't know, so we're not going to do anything about it. Um, but the other practicality for me, as the manager pointed out, is that if it comes through a petition, we don't have any say over when it goes. It's going to be a special election because it's going to be X number of days after those petitions get turned in and those signatures get certified. Uh, and I have no doubt that any one of the people sitting in this room can gather the signatures that they need to put this on the ballot, um, based on how many emails we've all gotten in the last couple of weeks suggesting that it should go on the ballot. Um, so I think for me, uh, first of all, I already support putting it on, out for a referendum. Uh, but I also think whether, even if there were seven votes here that said we don't want to put it on the referendum, it's, it's going to end up there one way or another. And I'd rather have it happen when we're already running the election and we don't have the added cost.
Yeah, I, I support putting it out to referendum for a lot of the same reasons that Counselor Smith offered. Um, my preference, as I've been saying for probably three years now, would have been to put it out with a vision, to say we want to buy it because we think it should be a park, a new police station, a town hall extension, a parking lot, an apartment building. We don't have that vision. You know, I'll fault the seven of us for that. Well, I won't fault us because we, we did discuss it and we decided not to buy it. We just didn't decide not to do anything. We decided actively to not buy it. But, um, I, I think it's now time for, for the residents to decide. If they approve it, it may come back on our plates or the next council's plate, and we will need to figure that out. Um, but anyway, you know, a lot more to say about it, but for now, I support putting it out in referendum. Um, my only question's on the price. I, I thought it was listed at higher than $500,000.
No.
But I'm saying no, 500 is the list we're confident in.
That's the offer to us, to the town specifically.
Okay. Well, good then.
So for this particular one or both of these, it talks about, uh, recommendations is the style that you normally do. Um, that can be, um, X in favor, Y opposed, or offers no recommendation, but there should be some action with regard to that.
On, on both?
Yeah.
Both ballot issues?
Do we need to include a recommendation at all? Can we just leave that sentence out or are we required to put that in? It's required, okay.
It's recommended that we have a recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. So let, let's maybe take a vote on that. Uh, on the, um, opportunity to bond for the potential purchase of 22 Main Street, do we want to have a recommendation from the council in favor, against, or neutral?
I would suggest the town council offers no recommendation on this referendum question. I'd throw that out there for discussion.
Daryl?
By having a vote, one way, either way, it's going to get, even if we don't officially do it. So I, I would like to see us vote on that issue, and then the, the ladder truck is two separate issues. If they're together, I have to vote no because I don't support 22.
No, no, separate. I would do separate, yeah.
They'll be separate, they'll be separate opportu, yeah, they're not linked on the sun, on the ballot.
I understand. But are they going to be linked to us this evening?
Two different recommendations.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm saying no recommendation on 22 Main. That's all I'm saying.
Right. We're going to separate them, take a vote on whether or not each of these goes on to the ballot.
It says here, you know, in favor, opposed, and obviously, can we say, we don't recommend, we don't have any recommendation, but there was three in favor and four opposed or however...
That'll be in the public record. I think, uh, this will be what is on the ballot. So in the booth, the voter will see the town recommended or the town didn't recommend or recommended against, or the town had no recommendation. That's, that's what this discussion is right now, is what, what's the language going to say about the bond to potentially purchase 22 Main? Do we want to have a recommendation, yes or no or none? So, to move along, how, uh, how many people would say we, we should have no recommendation? How many people say we should have a yes recommendation? How many people say we should have a no recommendation? Okay. So...
So you could say, um, if I got the numbers right, five, uh, council recommendation, colon, five, offer no recommendation, and two opposed.
I, no, I think the, the, as I read this, there's, there's either...
Either, either, either.
There's either one parentheses or the other. And I think what we're saying is we want the second parenthetical offers no recommendation on this referendum question, rather than stating what, what a count is. Is that, is that possible?
Yeah, I mean, the count will be in the public record, but...
Yeah.
Of this meeting. But, um, okay, so from that vote, there'll be no recommendation from the council. Do we want to put this particular item on the ballot this November? As it's written or nearly as tightly as it's written? Those in favor? Those opposed? Okay, so it goes on the ballot, five to two. Um, all right. So the discussion about floating a bond of up to 1.6 million for the Pierce, is that what it's called? The quint?
Fire department ladder truck.
Yeah.
Can I go back to the last one? Is the town, are five people saying they're in favor of the bond passing?
No.
Because that's the way it will...
No, no, no. We are, we voted on, we don't want, we want it to say there's no recommendation from council.
Gotcha. All right.
That's all it's going to say.
Yeah, we need to make that clear. That was not a five in favor of...
Yep.
Because we're going to redo that vote if that's what that...
Five in favor, putting it on the ballot.
Putting it on the ballot with no recommendation.
Right.
No numbers of counselors on the ballot.
And then the, uh, the vote for the next item would be, uh, to ask the voters to support a bond of up to 1.6 million to purchase the Quint fire truck. With the various details of delivery time and potentially slightly less money if we can manage to find some savings and use a little bit of our reserve. Although, I'm, I'm with Daryl. I think we need to be padding that reserve for future 1.8 million dollar fire trucks. Four million dollars.
Yeah.
So would you like us to rerun the numbers with the 1.5 if you go that, so the upper end is $100,000 less?
Are, are we sure about, are we going to get that truck? I mean, we've made no commitment. It's a quote. If someone else comes in and says...
So if it goes out to bond, they're holding it for us. Um, and they're holding it until after our referendum. If it passes, then the very next meeting, we're going to come back and ask for permission to sign the contract, which will then hold it for us.
Got it. So there's, there's no risk to us. So we should have the firm number?
Yep.
The firm not to exceed. And I, I think we need to pay some of it down.
And you won't be able to answer this, but if, if we don't do the whole 1.5, are we just kicking the can down the road? That will affect other purchases in our capital budget because not only have fire trucks gone up, uh, plow trucks and police cruisers and everything else. So do we have, one, part of me is saying, we bite the bullet.
Yeah.
We take the whole 1.5, we say taxpayers, this is what's going to this truck. And then we can hopefully have some additional funding in the capital. But that's what part of me is saying.
So, so what I'm looking at, um, is trying to take all of the 7.5 million that we have and look at that in terms of creating a sustainable annual investment into the capital reserves. I think some amount will help that. But honestly, you take out a portion and you take what you would have paid in interest. You, you know what I mean? It, I, I think it's, I think it's about, if you asked about taking the whole 1.5 out, I wouldn't really, I'm not a big fan of that. But maybe 500,000 to come out and bond a million.
I think we have to be realistic about the rate environment. I mean, rates are going to come down. You wouldn't go out and borrow money just to hold it unless you're out of something you were going to purchase it on. And I, I think that we need a comprehensive evaluation as to how our capital budget's going to work and what's coming up next realistically.
going to work, and what's coming up next realistically, and get an idea of what costs are, and that gives us a better roadmap. I mean, I, I'm not going to, I'm not going to be in favor of bonding just to hold on to money for a future day, I think that's ludicrous. But I also think that we are in a stronger position, the less debt service we have, and we need to be really mindful of that. It gives us a lot of flexibility, and so I don't necessarily, just because we can go get one and a half million dollars and the rate doesn't seem terrible, that that's the best use of our current dollars. So I think it's a more comprehensive discussion.
This just gets us to that point, right?
Right, tonight's vote is to get it on to the ballot, up two. This is not committing us to borrow the 1.5.
Right, and, just to be clear, our town debt right now is very low.
Very, very low.
Very low, yeah.
507,200.
So we can, we can make the motion for this to be the 1.5, since that is the quote for the divided.
Up to 1.5, right?
Yeah, up to 1.5 instead of 1.6, since that is the desired piece of equipment.
Can I just ask a really quick question about that? The, that was a very flat number, based on the fact that this was a demo, does that include anything that we would modify in the build-out? Or is, do we need some kind of padding in there?
So the only thing that's not included, but Chief says he can find the money in his current budget, is the $5,000 to put red pa-- uh, put yellow paint on it as opposed to red.
Brilliant.
In addition to the one.
Sure we don't want to bond that part?
In addition to the 1.5 that we may raise, we have $968,000 of capital reserve for this fire truck.
So we can go down 1.5, is what, rather than this number?
So, all those in favor of putting language on the ballot to give to the clerks so we can get the ballot printed for the November 5th election, asking the voters to approve an amount up to 1.5 million dollars for the purchase of the fire truck, the Quint fire truck? Any opposed? Seven to zero.
And can I remove that we, we ought, we recommend that that is passed?
All right.
Yep.
All those in favor of adding a council recommendation to go ahead and approve that bond? All those in favor?
Aye.
Seven to zero as well. Okay. There you go, Chief, solid support. So, let's.
Be it ordered that the election warrant calling for November 5th, 2024, annual election, as discussed, be signed.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Pass at seven to zero. All right, that's item 220-24. Coming to the end here, to consider, next item is 221-24, to consider action relative to accepting $34,000 in micro-grantee funds from the Justice and Security Strategies, Inc. to help the, defray the cost of body cameras for our police department. Matt, I think we're down to you, please read the be it ordered, and we'll have a brief conversation from the chief about this item.
Be it ordered that up to $34,000 in micro-grantee funds from the Justice and Security Strategies, Inc., offered in partnership with the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, and Bureau of Justice Assistance, through the small rural tribal body-worn camera program toward the cost of purchasing body-worn cameras for the Freeport Police Department be accepted.
Second.
All right, it's removed and seconded. Chief, you want to give us a little context here on the opportunity to add this item?
Yes, we, um, this is an item that's come before council on different levels over the last few years, as far as funding, thoughts behind updating our ability to record, which is prior, just cruisers, and now we're going to equip every officer with a body-worn camera. So as part of this, we were out looking for revenue sources to see if we could help defray the cost locally, and Greg Mears was able to find a grant, we were awarded $34,000, provided it's accepted by the town, towards the total amount of our camera capital budget request.
Okay, the be it ordered item talks about body cameras, but in the memo, there's a discussion about an additional piece of equipment called a Flock camera, is that?
So that's the next item.
That's the next item, okay, never mind.
No worries, well, I'll stay here, I'll stay right here.
Yep, never mind. I'm going to ask to separate them so that we can have a conversation.
Are there any terms and conditions on the grant? Any reporting requirements, any, anything that we have to, that we should be aware of?
We have to submit monthly stats for the first three years that we participate with this program. We have to, I think we have to get a sign-off from finance that we agree to abide by that clause, and we have to show that we have, we'll be updating our policy to cover, to move from either no cameras, cruiser cameras, and then adding body-worn cameras. So we're in the process of gathering all that information to craft our own SOP to address this specifically.
Is the grant organ actually see our collected footage, or are they just asking for data on how often we use it?
No, they'll ask for periodic data as to how we're using it.
Okay, nobody's looking at our body camera?
No.
Okay.
Just so you know, under state law, body cam footage is mostly confidential, unless you can redact it. So we're, we're very careful about how we secure it. So with the policy, you have to have a policy mat that is approved by Department of Justice. And the finance is to follow the GASB requirements for use of federal dollars, part of the uniform guidance, so we, we already do that, so we should be okay.
And the purchase is already in the capital budget that we approved, so this is actually savings?
And, yes, and the, we have, on the 17th, you'll get the request to buy the equipment, I think, comes back.
The final approval for council.
Yep.
We, we opened the bids la-- end of last week, so we'll be coming to you with the formal.
Full bid.
Formal bid, yeah.
All right, any other questions for the chief on accepting the $34,000 grant? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Our next item, dash, item 222-24, to consider action relative to amending the purpose of the approved FY25 capital budget for the police department to include the purchase of Flock cameras. Darrell, could you please read the be it order?
Yes, be it ordered that the purpose of police department capital budget request for bodyware worn in, and in car cameras be amended to include the purchase of Flock cameras.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. I didn't get a chance to look at actually even what a Flock camera was until late today, this afternoon, so I'm quite hesitant to move forward on this particular item, but I'd like to hear what the rest of the council has to say. It's a significant jump, I think, from a body camera to a community-based camera. But I'd like to hear from the council, and I definitely want to hear, Chief, you wrote the memo, I want to hear what you're thinking about it.
Should we hear the presentation first?
Sure.
So this, this request, this addenda, addent, proposed addendum to our capital budget line item, I guess has kind of come about over, I'll take a five-year snapshot of the PD, in looking at the workload of the officers and detectives, and looking at everything from large-scale events, from the disappearance of people in the community, elderly, children, to major crimes, robberies, aggravated assaults, attempted murders, and then things that are probably more mundane or ordinary, like thefts, burglaries, and simple assaults. So what we found over this snapshot is that we are, the process to finding out who's committing crimes, we spend a significant amount of people hours doing police work. We knock on doors, talk to people around the scene of the crime, or the disappearance, or the incident, and then we try to kind of reverse engineer bits and pieces, and put together as much of a picture as we can of the incident that we're dealing with. And oftentimes, this can take individual officers two, three, four days to find out who has access to perhaps ATM surveillance footage, bank cameras, Ring cameras on houses, cameras mounted in Teslas and other vehicles, and we get permission 99% of the time to obtain this footage, then go through the footage to find evidence of the crime, or to find out who did it, or to find out where we think this is headed. There's several major incidents where we spent three, four, five days trying to gather the information, then you have to sit in front of a computer screen, and the individual officers have to pour over hundreds of hours of grainy, sometimes grainy footage, and then try to piece together a case. So this type of system would be one that the cameras are set up in static positions throughout the community, usually high-traffic corridors that link the community to the highway, or the community to neighboring communities, and they essentially record nonstop all day and all night. They have capability to record in low light, and the information is constantly uploaded to our server. Access to this information, in the case of a crime, or a disappearance, kidnapping, major event, would only be granted provided the officer and his supervisor can sign off to request data from a specific data, a specific point in time. So for instance, if we had a child that was kidnapped from a location in town, the officers could request to get the camera footage for an X amount of time period around that incident, to try to quickly pull the data from that, those areas, to match it against eyewitness testimony and other evidence that we're gathering concurrently. And what we found in other jurisdictions around the United States is, instead of taking three, four, and five days to solve crimes, it can be done in a matter of hours sometimes, and in a time-is-life scenario where we need information quickly, it allows, provided there's approval and oversight, it allows a quick access to a large volume of data that can then be pushed through the state databases to find out witness information, possible suspect information, and things that could be really fruitful in helping solve a crime or save a life. So I'm as distrustful as the next person when it comes to my information being recorded everywhere, so I fully appreciate any misgivings anyone might have about this. Something I've mulled over myself, and we've, with our command staff, we've talked about it a lot, we think the positives outweigh the negatives, and we believe that any system could potentially be abused, but we have good safeguards in place to protect people's information when we use the state databases, NCIC, National Crime Information Index, the state computers. Anytime we access this information, it needs authentication and sign-off by a supervisor, and we currently do that now with criminal cases in major incidents. So essentially, what we would be doing is adding in something that we would control, or we would have access to, without subpoenas and search warrants, to glean information from a camera that's mounted on Main Street, but we don't have control over. So if something happens at Main and Mallet, and McDonald's has a camera that points at the intersection, and it's a Saturday night at nine o'clock, and we can't get a hold of the ownership of the store, we have to sit on that information until Monday morning, or until we can get an emergency contact to get through. So it's a, I think, a piece of equipment that would yield really positive results if it's, you know, supervised properly.
So if I could just add a couple of things, because I'm looking at it without the law enforcement lens, maybe, but also very sensitive to the idea of keeping records of people. The, I'm aware that we have, so number one, the Flock system is not something that we own or maintain here. There is a network of cameras that all go into a Flock system that is monitored and overseen by Department of.
Justice?
There we go.
Yeah.
And so I'll just give two examples, and Chief can yell at me really fast if I shouldn't be saying this, but in the time I've been here, I'm aware of two major kind of crime sprees that happened, one with, dealing with people stealing checks, and others, actual burglaries of businesses. And I was talking to the detective who, on one of those cases, had to go door-to-door, get all the footage from businesses that are pointing out to look for a car, a specific car, trying to figure out what the license plate was with, with a description of the general time of day and the color. Another one, he had similar information, and went, got permission, and when it's permission, it's not just Nate saying it, you have to access, you have to make it a request, you get permission, and he says, I have a red car at 3:45 a.m., and it gave us the license plate of the only red car on Route 1 at 3:45 a.m., which then led them to do the rest. So there is a reason I split this question, because it all could have been one question, but it is in the capital budget for, on the capital plan for next year or the year after at $60,000, and that's why we brought it now, because they can wrap it in as part of a, of a project, but, yes.
So I've done a fair amount of research on this over the last few hours that we have seen your memo, and I think there are significant differences that I want to call out between body cameras, for example, and the Flock cameras. And it really is all about, excuse me, control of the data. You were very clear about the fact that body camera footage is, you know, recorded by us, maintained by us, is sort of under our protection, and, and used as evidence where it needs to be. And one of the things that I think is significantly different for body cameras is the fact that you're probably not recorded on a body camera unless you're face-to-face with a law enforcement officer, and you know that you are face-to-face with a law enforcement officer. It's not a nondescript black pole that you happen to be driving by.
Yeah.
So that's, that's one thing. But the difference in terms of managing the data is Flock is a private corporation that actually is the recipient of all of this data. It's not controlled or limited by the Freeport Police Department. So even though we would be paying for the installation of these cameras, all of the data that's collected goes into that national database. And it is recording, it's, it's not a static video, I mean, or, you know, it's not just taking video like a normal security camera, and then if something happens, a couple days later, you can go and look back, and you can search for that exact time and see what happened. These cameras are actively reading license plate numbers and recognizing through artificial intelligence the make and model, and potentially more as the data analysis improves.
Yeah, they use the state database.
Yeah, and, and processing it every single. Yeah, and processing it every single car that drives by. It is actively running and checking that information against any law enforcement agency's hot list of vehicles that it's...
If we opt into that.
Right, and so that is really where my concern is. And so just in terms of where we are tonight, without setting our own limits on how the data generated in Freeport would be used, and how long it would be kept, and who has access to it, I would not be able to vote to approve authorization to fund and install these cameras until we actually have a policy in front of us that says how they're going to be used and how the data's going to be used.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, you, we are essentially signing up for whatever the terms of use, default terms of use are for Flock, only as limited by the state statute of how long data can be kept, which is 21 days. And, you know, I'm as guilty as the next person of just breezing by privacy agreements and licensing agreements and scrolling to the bottom, but I'm not willing to do that for the town of Freeport. So that's my concern, is about, until we have a very clear data use policy, it's a very different thing than footage that we're recording and then keeping under our own control.
Yeah, I have the same concerns.
Chief, is there any discussion that the state law enforcement or public safety might be looking at some kind of an implementation across, you know, major arteries or whatever the locations are for these cameras?
I think there are...
It just seems like we're throwing darts with a blindfold on. This community has it, this community doesn't, this community has it. And that doesn't seem awfully coordinated. It may be limited usefulness if we have something happen right here, and it happens to be in front of one of these installed cameras. But it just seems like this kind of capture, so to speak, really should be coming from a, sort of a regional or statewide. I'm just curious if the state police or the State Department of Public Safety's had conversations about this with you.
Not with me, no. I think this has come up in other communities to different, to different results. But, you know, the state, I think, is, they're already collecting similar data at every toll plaza, which is under, every 21 days, they roll over that data. But every vehicle that goes through a toll plaza already is monitored in a similar fashion.
There's a payment of toll required, yeah.
Yep.
Not to my knowledge.
Might be traffic.
There are traffic monitoring cameras in some states, I don't know about...
I would, yeah, I guess I would like to hear a lot more about what State Department of Public Safety or state police have to say about their plan to take a look at this before we would engage. But, Darryl?
I guess I would need more information on where the cameras are going. And I, I don't know, but I'm, thank you, Councilor Smith, for bringing that up, because you added a lot more than I knew to this, and I got some concerns that I think, you know, we need, I need more information. As it sits right now, I'm not comfortable with it, because I'm not sure where they're going, what we're doing. It's got some positive sides, but, you know, I think a more regional approach is something, maybe. As of right now, I don't think I'm comfortable with supporting it.
Yeah, I agree with what everyone is saying as well, and I think with every pro, I'm sure there are several cons that we haven't discussed here tonight. And so I think we need to sort of think what's worth it for what Freeport needs. Yeah, so I would need much more information.
So we can make a motion to table, item number 222-24.
I'll make the motion to table.
So looking for some direction.
Yeah.
What exactly... Is that something we can talk about? Okay.
Before it comes back, and maybe this is what you and Chief are going to discuss, you know, I gather that we're not taking action on it tonight other than to table it. But before it comes back, it sounds like there are a number of concerns, and there are a lot of questions that we would be asking. So if it doesn't come back, that would be an acceptable outcome as well. But if it does, I would just be prepared for that. And it's something that I, personally, I would want to make sure that we do a lot of public outreach on. I don't think this is something we should sneak in, I think.
Maybe we can funnel individual questions to the manager, so that can be part of the conversation.
If it looks like it's going to come back, yeah. Yep.
Can I just say one more thing? I do want to acknowledge what you started off with, Chief, about how much manpower and time goes into that detective work and that investigation. And I don't want to slight that or diminish it. I'm just also very aware that in some ways, our constitutional rights put that burden on you to do all of that work, which I thank you for doing in those instances. I'm just aware that there are a lot of things that could make it easier, but there's also a price for that, and I'm not sure that we're quite ready to pay that price yet.
Well, I hear you loud and clear. Thank you.
Well, and I think Chief and I are going to be coming to you, and I don't know if there's a body that will make it to first, or if it will come as other business, to talk about some of those manpower constraints, and perhaps that this, how this fits in. So I think if you table it, we'll figure out what to do with it.
All right.
Just one more comment. I just want to kind of notice that several times, there was sort of like a, we didn't have a lot of time with this information. I wish we had more time. That's a trend I'm noticing, and I'm wondering if we can remedy that somehow. I think we need to, we're making very important decisions, and I'm grateful for Counselor Smith for flagging this for me earlier today, but we need more time with this stuff.
Somewhat relatedly, sometimes we don't get the packets emailed to us in advance. And the packets have all the individual items broken out, so I learned about stuff because I went to the website and downloaded it.
I am sorry, I thought, I thought you got the whole packet. That's my, I'm sorry.
All right, so I'll make a motion to table, item 222-24. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our last item on the action items is to consider action relative to approving certificates of settlement for assessed property for the taxes for the fiscal years '22, '23, and '24 be approved. Yeah, I just read it. Sorry, it's late. Sophie, can you explain briefly what a certificate of settlement is?
Yes, so the town manager in Freeport is the official tax collector. And so last year, when you didn't have a town manager, Jessica was your tax collector. The assessment of property taxes is actually, it's actually assessed to an individual, giving them the responsibility of collecting that tax. So in state law, there's a process that you have to go through when you change tax collectors to settle or agree upon how much is left for, that the other person did everything they were supposed to do and all the money matches, and the new person is going to have to now collect these, this amount. So unfortunately, I gain another title back. Jessica assures me it's minimal work, but in order to make everything match with appointments, we need to settle this, and then I will have a new, when the property tax is committed in a couple of weeks, that will come under my name.
If I can just ask, this is looking back to '22 and '23, because you weren't on there, and now you're going to be the tax collector.
Yep, so it's '22, '23, '24, because they do it by fiscal year. So '25, I will, it will just be in my name.
Any questions for the manager? All those in favor of approving the certificates of settlement?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that is our action item, action items agenda this evening. Next up is public comment period for members online. Do we have any members joining us virtually who'd like to address the council on non-agenda items?
I see the media and a telephone number, and neither one has their hand up.
All right, we had four items on the other business. We took care of number one at the beginning of the meeting. We'll go through numbers two, three, and four. Council Benoit, anti-graffiti program update.
This is following up from, honestly, over a year ago at this point, where we had several incidences in town of graffiti that folks that were not pleasant, and kind of lingered a bit longer than we would have liked, due to not really knowing who was taking responsibility or had the ability to take responsibility for it. So this was through the Social Racial Equity Committee, which started with John, and then I took over this last year. And sort of with the understanding of, you know, it's hard to regulate sort of, you know, graffiti... What am I looking for? Graffiti instances in town. This was, and also appreciating that, you know, we don't necessarily want to put in more ordinances and regulation where it's not necessary. We came up with the graffiti program, anti-graffiti program update instead, which is essentially a program that will be designed that a landowner could basically sign a waiver with the town, so that the town could then take care of the graffiti, with the intention of, you know, if there's something lingering that's bothering the community, you know, instead of asking or requesting it be removed, instead it could be a, hey, do you know that if you sign this waiver, the town will take care of it for you, to hopefully expedite that removal process? So this is, you know, way less punitive, which I think is a good thing, and way more sort of, you know... Taking neighborly, popular word lately, and also more proactive, I think, to solving the problem.
Is there any, because I had this comment last year, is there any sort of context where the graffiti might be interpreted as public art? And a property owner may feel perfectly fine with the public art that's on their building, even though it wasn't invited. And other members may think that it's not in good taste, or whatever their negative opinion might be.
Yeah, and I, you know, I think there's not, feel free to step in, Sophie, on this. You know, that's a tough one. I think this eliminates sort of the possibility of, you know, I didn't do it, I don't want it there, but I'm not going to take care of it, so I'm calling it public art. It's okay. This gives more of a, well, the town can help you out with that, so you don't have to do it. But I think sort of, we talked a lot about private property, and what you can and cannot do on private property, and this is definitely a tricky thing to navigate in that regard.
Sure, having somebody from Public Works come over and scrub your side of your building, that doesn't happen very easily.
I think the thing to just keep in mind with this is, none of the decisions about whether or not it's graffiti, or we will spend community resources to clean it, can be based on its content. That is against the freedom of speech, and it's been vetted. So this is kind of where I came from, talking a little bit with Main Municipal Association and a little bit with the town attorney. Because what Social and Racial Equity originally came through with was a draft ordinance. And the issue, it recapitulated that tagging somebody's private property with graffiti is not, is a crime in, or it's against statute. And it then kind of made people have to clean it up, and we would help them if they said it was graffiti. And I think what we're really saying here is, if you have something on your property, and you don't want it, and you don't have the means to take care of it, the town could help if it's graffiti, meaning put there against your will. So I think we wanted to give the update to see if counsel, are we kind of trying to get a nod on whether or not counsel wants to move forward? Because the next step would be to bring it forward as a program, as opposed to an ordinance. And it would be constrained by budget workload, and I think I put something else in there.
I think the other piece of this is one of those incidents from last fall or last summer. Part of why it took so long for it to be removed was multiple agencies pointing at each other in terms of whose responsibility it was, and nobody feeling like they had the authority to just go and clean it up, which I think led private citizens to do it. And so I think what we're trying to say is, this could be a way to just streamline that and say, yes, it's not our property, it's your property, but we'll go in and do it, and you don't have to worry about it anymore. And I think that that is a...
Upon invitation from the property owner.
Well, or that we, or that if it's brought to the attention of the property owner by a private citizen, for example, which is, was the case, I think, last year, they could also communicate this program, that the town could help out. So no, I don't think it's, it's not about the town going around policing public art, but I think it's a way that, it may not be coming solely from the landowner. It may be folks that have noticed it because the landowner is not, or the property owner's not present to notice it, and therefore, it's not top of mind for them. But it is for the people that walk by it every day.
But the program implementation doesn't happen until the property owner says, I'd like you to come and clean this up.
Right.
Right, so it's not mandatory, it's...
It's voluntary, okay. So that makes it a program as opposed to an ordinance? Yep. That sounds good. Darryl?
I've heard during the budget deliberations, Public Works is overworked. How are we going to do this? Are we going to pass something that we can't achieve? We're good, you know?
We've had two instances in the last six years that I've been on the council that could have been cleaned up in about an hour.
That have also, I would, and I would also say have caused more time and effort and strife to have this conversation than it would be to say, we have this program, sign this paperwork, and we'll take care of it.
It's also constrained by workload and everything else. It's a program, it's not a, it's not an ordinance, it's not a, you have to do this, it's...
So part of what I wanted to make sure we were really clear on is, and I think I did it in the program, you tell me, that essentially, using people, Earl goes out, he looks at it, and says, yeah, I can cover that with some approximate paint, or that should scrub off with X solvent, but it might do a little damage, are you okay with that? We get the waiver, everybody is fine with it. But if he goes out and says, well, given what you have on your home, we're really going to have to repaint the side of your house, we would probably say that is outside of the scope. And administratively, we might consider putting in some timeframes about, you know, we'll give up to an hour of time, or something like that. You know, I don't know, I don't know about graffiti. I didn't add that, because I kind of was thinking we could see how things went. But an hour here and an hour there for Earl is kind of part of what we, what we do. This seemed better than trying to create rules that we really have a hard time with.
But to Dan's point, we've had two instances the last six years?
That's what I can recall.
Yep. So why are we chasing after something we don't have a problem with?
I would say that we've had two instances that have made it up to this level. I think there's probably an under-reporting there. And I also would say that, you know, this was deeply upsetting to a lot of people in our community, as made evident by the event that we held outside Town Hall that was well-attended. So it had a big impact, and it was very hurtful. And so if we can do a small effort here to help show that we understand that, and are putting very little resources into making sure we get ahead of it next time, I think that's a win.
All right, well, it's other business, we're not taking an action, but it seems like the program's going to come forward. Do you need anything else? Do you need anything else?
No, just that, that will just come forward here. If people have, if people have comments to the draft that everybody has, would you just let me know and I can maybe incorporate it? Can always rely on Councilor Pilch for my grammar edit.
Our next other business item is to set and describe council district workshops. Thanks to Chris and input from everybody. We now have that schedule, it's been presented in an agenda item, I'm sorry, in a memo that's in our package. Any other further comments about that? This is a renewal of something we used to do. I have attended several of them in my early part of my career on the, well, not career, early part of my service on the council.
We used to do them in two, you know, like one and three, and two and four, and the next year we'd switch.
That's my recollection as well. So we have...
And they were all at the community center.
We have, not all of them, I went to one down at Mallet Barn in Wolfneck, and I went to one at the high school once too, so. Anyway, so we have a schedule that's been arranged with locations and logistics, and I believe we have recording equipment going there as well. Do you have recording equipment from town?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. So thanks for everyone that contributed to that, and hopefully this may start small, but hopefully gets some momentum as the council gets out from behind this desk and into the community more often.
Are these full meetings with all councilors, or is it more workshop style with...
It's workshop style specifically for the district councillor, but anybody's welcome to attend.
So the, what we had talked about in terms of the hope was definitely the district councillor would be at that district meeting, and then at-large councillors would be at at least one, but maybe two if they could make it. And this had started out, of course, as a way of trying to talk through the Climate Action Plan, but it quickly developed that if we were going to do the amount of work, and Chris has done a lot of work, to try to both work this out with district councillor schedules and venues within our prescribed timeline. If we were going to go out, we should also be talking about comprehensive plan, and we should be talking about lots of other things that we want to get input from. So I think there will also be town staff present to be talking about those things, and potentially members of the Sustainability Advisory Board as well to answer questions about Climate Action Plan and things like that.
So I noticed the first one's not too far off, so I am wondering about how we get the word out.
If this list is good for you, we'll push it out, social media, website. I'm thinking we can turn around a postcard pretty quickly. Because you're the, because you're the postcard person.
So we've done, for workshops in the past, we've done them in-house. I know that actually is a big stack lift, I think you could do a mailer for about $3,000, like you just did for the compliance, direct mail with a save the date, that would go to all mailing addresses, so those would be options for the best.
We could also tie that in with the senior property tax.
What's the date of your first workshop?
September 18.
Yeah, you're not going to make direct mail, you need like three weeks for that, so you have to be in-house.
Yeah, we could still do it.
Surprise tomorrow, I have lots to come.
And that would just be mailing to District One residents? Or you would be, mail it, would you mail it to everybody with all the dates?
I would mail it to everybody with all the dates.
Are you also including the other workshops that we have on the 23rd and October and all that?
I think we could, we could do all of that.
That's a lot of dates.
We could.
We can deliver about that tomorrow.
Okay.
I mean, for the expense of getting it out there, I encourage we get as many of the dates on there as possible.
And I just want to say thank you, Chris, for hustling and getting that together. Really appreciate it.
It's more of a job than you'll think.
Oh, yes, event planning.
So if you do it in-house, we'll spread it, we'll assess property owners, you see...
So not renters.
So we can't do current resident?
Yeah, I don't think we have time, we can call tomorrow, we can call tomorrow and figure out the batch that we got the word out in the short amount of time.
So given our timeframe, we will make effort.
And again, hopefully this is restarting, so we'll get the kinks and bumps out of the way, and it'll be great.
This could go on our public safety sign, too.
Yes.
Okay, our last other business item is a request from Freeport Can to have a lending program for various pieces of equipment. And I think the permission request here is for a little bit of funding for such activity. So do we have a presentation, or are we going to hear from...
So the person who gets the award is Mason for staying with the, with the last item on the agenda.
Four hours and 15 minutes.
Yeah, I think he is good to give a brief presentation.
My presentation involves a budget, and I'm not sure that...
They have it.
It's on the screen?
Oh, they have it, they have a, all right.
Do you need a copy? I have, we have an extra.
Hello, my name is Mason Morfitt, I live in District Three, and I'm a co-founder of Freeport Climate Action Now. I'm here to propose a new initiative that will bring significant concrete benefits to the residents of Freeport. As you know, we're facing an existential crisis in the form of climate change, the primary cause of which is the release of greenhouse gases into the atmosphere. What you may not know is the two-cycle gasoline-powered lawn equipment is a significant source of greenhouse gases, four to five percent of total GHGs in the U.S., as well as the volatile organic compounds, microscopic particles that invade the lungs, and other things that aren't good for our health. They're also notoriously noisy, and you may have heard enough this evening about noise complaints. Fortunately, for example, according to the EPA, a gas-powered lawnmower emits as much pollution in one hour of operation as driving a car for 45 minutes. A two-stroke leaf blower emits more pollutants than a 6,000-pound Ford 150 pickup truck. Fortunately, electric lawn care equipment is increasingly available, increasingly effective, has longer-lasting batteries, and is increasingly affordable. Two problems have inhibited wider adoption by the public. One, individuals have never tried one, and they don't want to buy one until they've tried one. And two, other individuals, particularly our lower-income neighbors, can't afford to buy one. One effective solution to this problem that's been successfully implemented by our neighboring municipalities of Brunswick and South Portland is a lending library of electric lawn care equipment. These libraries are like traditional book-based libraries and use town library cards for identification and transaction processing, but offer electric tools rather than books. They have the added benefit of generating more members for the traditional libraries. Based on discussions with the equipment libraries in Brunswick and South Portland, we're proposing to equip our equipment library with eight EGO brand tools, eight batteries, and eight chargers, as shown on your budget. The cost of this core equipment is $6,807 to $8,807, depending on what size snowblower we buy, based on quotes from a local hardware dealer. We've also included the estimated cost of a storage shed and associated electrical service for charging batteries if these are needed. Based on conversations with town manager Sophie Wilson, it may be possible to locate the library in one of several locations, such as the library, the public service, public service building, or the transfer station, but we've included the shed, she'd know existing location, prove feasible. Finally, we've included the cost of getting the word out with a town-wide postcard mailing and an ad in the Northern Forecaster. We would also anticipate using the town website and FCAN social media. The most expensive aspect of the Brunswick and South Portland arrows, and the major concern of Freeport town staff when we first discussed this project a year ago, is the increased labor and compensation required to operate the libraries. Brunswick Library is operated by the Curtis Memorial Library, which doesn't break out the cost of operating their library of more than 1,000 tools, some of which are electric. However, South Portland's library is operated by a dedicated part-time employee on the Public Works payroll. We don't know his compensation, but it's enough that the South Portland Tool Library is open only two days a week for five hours a day, a time envelope that their sustainability coordinator says is much too small given the demand. Their 22 tools are almost always loaned out. Fortunately, a very useful app called MyTurn, similar to Resi or OpenTable for restaurant reservations, has become available and soon will be adopted by South Portland, is their highest priority improvement. Like its restaurant equivalents, MyTurn allows potential units to reserve online a specific time slot for specific tools, to check them out, to document returns, and to provide comments. There are a lot more bells and whistles available, but that's the core function. This cuts management of the library to a minimum after initial staff training and greatly increases user satisfaction and utilization. I won't go furly into the weeds on how I calculated the time spent to operate this system, but I'm estimating that it's a shade over two hours per week during the summer and less than half of that during the winter. MyTurn's cost is based on a sliding scale depending on the size of the subscribing organization, but would be available to Freeport Can as a tiny and impoverished nonprofit at $29 a month or $300 a year. All users would be required to sign an equipment use agreement, similar to South Portland, which specifies the responsibility of the user, charges for returning damaged or inoperable equipment, financial and legal penalties for lost or stolen equipment, and a statement of indemnification which holds the municipality harmless against all claims, suits, et cetera. It's our understanding that the town has approximately $22,000 left and is yet unallocated ARPA funds. This project would appear to be made to order for ARPA funding and was and is, as was and is, the municipal rebate program, which includes electric tools. We therefore propose that $16,000 be allocated to the Library of Tools project, virtually all of which can be committed before the end of the current fiscal year. And finally, we would urge the council to allocate the approximately $6,000 remaining in allocated ARPA funds after funding the Tool Library to the municipal rebate program, as it appears the Freeport Housing Trust will be in a position to use all of that to purchase additional heat pumps for its lower-income tenants within a week or so. Thank you very much, very much for your serious consideration and your tolerance in waiting this long.
Mason, I have a question. I've tried, tried out one of the EGO battery-operated snow blowers.
Yep.
Was disinclined because of the cost, but also because of the weight. And I'm wondering, how does a person who has a relatively modest amount of snow blowing manage to get to the library, pick up a snow blower, and take it back to their property to do the work, and then bring it back?
I think you'd need a vehicle or a truck.
I think you'd need a trailer.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if we might consider the larger, heavier items that might be used in such a library come secondarily to just see if there's a demand for those, and that the hand-carry items, leaf blowers, even a battery-operated lawnmower, is fairly light, could be taken out by a person or two. But that the snow blower is significant, it's a significant expense and also significant weight. I'm just wondering if that's, if we might hold off on that before we, before we do such a thing. I like the idea, and I've seen these work elsewhere, not necessarily with just electric tools, but in places where a lot of renters don't have access to store these things, and they would very much appreciate having access to them to take care of the property where they live, whether or not they own it. So I'm in favor of this, I just think that the snow blower is not necessarily the smartest idea. But I'm coming in at the last second telling you how to run your program, so I'm mindful of that, but...
And I haven't run the program, but in South Portland, people told me that they didn't initially have snow blowers, and it's by far the largest request they've got for additions to the library.
Really?
I don't know how people think they're going to pick them up without a truck or a van, but a lot of people seem to think so.
Okay.
I can tell you from experience that an EGO snow blower will drive itself up into the back of the pickup truck with ramps quite easily, as somebody who owns one and transports it between multiple properties. However, a trailer is not a bad idea, even for some of the smaller items. And I don't know how you would price that out for what that would be, but as someone who also picks an electric lawnmower up several times a week in and out of a truck, I can do that, but I wouldn't suggest it for everyone. So a trailer could, could actually be a good investment as a part of moving some of this equipment around.
Okay.
So Mason and Bob Stevens...
Bob Stevens, yeah.
Were, had a conversation with me. Evidently, this was something that folks had talked with Earl about a year or more ago. Earl thinks that putting this at the Public Works facility makes a lot of sense, especially if they're kind of maintaining the, the software so that we just will have to look in, like many other programs that we have for the community. And what he likes about it is if something comes back in, it's not going to take his staff but a couple of minutes to put string on a, on a trimmer or whatever. So he thinks that we could have eyes on it after each. So that's, if council wants to move forward, that is kind of the, would be the plan. But this is an opportunity for discussion, because I would put this in as part of kind of where we're going with the ARPA money that...
Which we should probably talk about again.
Yes.
I was just wondering, down the road, when the stuff breaks down, whose budget's going to pick that up?
So the way I look at it is this is kind of like the Wood Bank, in that they're asking to use town property, and we're providing a little assistance to people. But I think that we would want to know that.
Supplies your equipment, maintains your equipment, they're not asking for $14,000.
Yep.
That's a little bit different, and...
I guess what I was thinking, the similarity, was they were using our space. I, I wasn't thinking that this was going to be part of a, but maybe, I mean, I don't know, I don't, I don't know.
I can just tell you that the South Portland reports that the, they've not had to do any maintenance yet, they think they may sharpen the blades on the lawnmowers this, this fall, but that's it.
And I think we can see how it goes, right? Put some effort into it. And I can also say this as a fairly new homeowner, who every, feel like every time I have to do anything, I have to go buy equipment. This would be pretty dreamy for me, so, thank you.
I think particularly for the low-income residents, you know, can't afford to buy one, don't have place, someplace to store one.
If we do this at Public Works, do we not need electrical service and a storage shed? Can we shave that five grand off?
I think we might still need a storage shed. I think Earl's point with the bottom section, the electrical service I think we'll be fine with, but the, some mechanism to put them in, you haven't been in the Public Works garage in a while, pretty full.
I think you need 220 service, that's, that's the key.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've got that, I think we've got that. But when Earl and I were chatting, he was kind of hoping to see what the renovation at Public Works looked like before he made a decision on if it could fit inside or needed to go inside.
Of course, you're putting it inside. Let's look at the history of lithium batteries.
Yep.
So, boy.
Let's put them outside.
We see it in the news every day.
Can I clarify, is, is FCAN going to be purchasing the equipment?
Can I clarify, is, is FCAN gonna be purchasing the equipment with the ARPA money, or is the town gonna purchase and own the equipment?
I'm sorry, I couldn't quite hear the-
Is the town gonna own the equipment ongoing, or is FCAN gonna own the equipment?
It was assumed that the town would own the equipment.
Yeah, my recollection is when we talked about this a year and a half ago, maybe, that it was a town program and we were only kind of blocked by space and personnel.
Gotcha.
But that we wanted to do it, it was just a matter of scoping it out, and I think I felt so thankful to Mason and Bob for sticking with it.
Yeah.
And getting to this part, but I think of it as a town program with support from FCAN.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's my view, that's-
Yeah, I'm, I'm mindful of how expensive it is to repair battery tools when they do break, so, because I've, I've been using them for seven or eight years, but I, I'm a little concerned about that, so I'd, I'd like to have further conversations with FCAN about maybe some fundraising to start building a repair fund so that they, we don't just buy them and they get, you know, used like crazy for two and a half years, and then half of them don't work. So, which, you know, may not be the experience elsewhere, but is a possibility.
If the town owns the equipment, I'm assuming we build in some sort of liability disclaimer in the loan agreement, and we're not, we don't have any particular concern about that?
So based on my conversation, I kind of was assuming that we were providing a space for FCAN to do its good work, so I would need to get back in touch with Mason and Bob. And I think for me, as we're thinking about how to parse out the little tiny bit of ARPA money that's left, I wanted to put this on the radar screen, and I want to be able to bring it back, because we really need to do that. September's here, we thought we would try to do that by the October 1st meeting.
I agree.
I think there's a use it or lose it provision to the ARPA funding, right?
There is, there is. So I think we're just looking for the feedback, and if it's generally supported, then let us come, I can come back to you with the town piece if that's how it's gonna be, and a different kind of setup. But I would like to do this in context with all of the ARPA money that's left. There's not a lot, if that makes sense.
And as I said at the end of my remarks, there's a great opportunity, because Freeport Housing Trust is gonna be installing, I think, 22 more units within the next week or so, so that could easily absorb that money, and it would be a great way to finish off the municipal rebate program, which I would characterize as being very successful.
Yep, a few more details and I think we'd be ready to vote on it.
All right, so we'll put that together. Counselor Benoit? We'll get together and come back with information for people to digest around ARPA.
Yes, we'll pick that back up.
Thanks, Mason, particularly for sticking with us tonight.
Thank you for sticking with me. I was able to go out and get coffee.
Okay, that is the end of our written agenda. Do we have an item for executive session?
Yes, we do.
Item number 224-24. Counselor Pilch, could you please put us into executive session?
I would be happy to. I move that the council enter executive session with the town attorney pursuant to one MRSA Section 405.6A pertaining to a personnel matter.
Second.
Shouldn't it be the town attorney?
Should not be the town attorney, without the town attorney.
Can you just, yep. Does it say town attorney?
Says with the town attorney.
Oh, yeah, just skip that.
So I revise my motion to be without the town attorney.
I'll revise my second to a second.
Thank you.
All those in favor? All right, we're gonna go into executive session.
Awesome.
Do you need the lead to zoom up?